I would like to call to order the Temple City Council Meeting for July 16th, 2019. Roll call please.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Fish?
Here.
If everyone could please stand. Jerry Jambasian, owner of Wonder Cleaners and Draperies will provide our invocation. Wonder Cleaners and Draperies has been doing business in the city for over sixty years. Please remain standing for Boy Scout Troop 161 to do the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led tonight by Jared Dew, Senior Patrol Leader. Real quickly, Boy Scouts presenting the flags are Duncan Vigara, Corey Nguyen, Joshua Schuh, and Daniel Schuh. Boy Scout Troop 161 will be selling their famous shaved ice cream at concerts in the park this week, so after the City Council open house, come by and cool off by having a shaved ice while you watch Raymond Michaels as Elvis in Temple City Park tomorrow evening. All money's earned at the shaved ice booth goes to camp, to scout campership. Thank you, Jerry.
Let's bow in prayer, please. Our gracious heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity that we have to come before you tonight, Father, to conduct city business. Thank you for each council member that is here tonight. Councilmember Yu and Sternquist and Mann. Thank you for Mayor Protem Chavez and Mayor Fish. Father, thank you for the opportunities that we have as a city to do good. And Father, as we do good, we know that there's tragedy in this world, and Father, we witnessed that last night. So Father, I just pray that you'd be with those three young children and the mother, Father, as they're grieving. So Father, thank you for each person that is here tonight. Thank you for our commissioners that volunteer so much time, as they are renewed tonight and as new ones come. Father, I just pray that this would be a time of refreshment for them and service. So Father, thank you for this time together tonight, and collectively, we wish a happy birthday to Councilmember Cynthia Sternquist. So Father, thank you for everything that you do in our lives. For your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Call guard, attention. Call guard, front and center. Call guard, forward march. Hold. Please post a flag of the United States of America. Please post a California state flag. All those in uniform and veterans, please salute. All those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Call guard, retreat. Call guard, retreat. Hold. Call guard dismissed. The audience may now be seated.
Okay, we're going to move on to item five ceremonial matters. Item A, Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District update. Charles Trevino, Director of Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, will provide an introduction remarks, and Tom Love, General Manager of Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, will provide a brief state of the district and water supply update. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. Madam Mayor Fish, honorable council members, thank you for this opportunity that you've allowed us to come here and talk to you about a critical issue of water. But first, before I start, let me just say happy birthday to Cynthia on behalf of my wife and I.
Oh, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Trevino. I'm an elected board member of the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, and I have the distinct honor and pleasure of representing the city of Temple City on the water board. Upper District is a regional water agency and wholesaler for eighteen cities and twenty-seven retailers in the San Gabriel Valley. Roughly about a million people get our water one way or another. And so, our primary responsibility is to provide the imported water from the bay, the delta, and through connection with Metropolitan, to help replenish the groundwater basin here. I was also appointed a couple of years ago by my board colleagues to represent the district on the Metropolitan Water District Board of Directors, and I'm proud to serve in that capacity and actively work on the Metropolitan Board to provide a voice for the San Gabriel Valley and to ensure that we have received our fair share of imported water. And Tom will talk about our cyclic storage and the fact we've been able to work something with Metropolitan to store water in our basin, which I think is critically important. Right now, at this point in time, we do have some water, and we want to take advantage of storing that water. I was also appointed, well, recently, there have been questions regarding our local conditions and our water supply levels on our groundwater basin. So we are here tonight to bring an awareness to our groundwater basin levels, to update you also on our conservation program and our education outreach program, and it's important that we remain diligent in our daily water use efficiency. We are not out of the drought, regardless of what the governor says or anybody else. The drought continues. Eight-year drought, and we've had a couple of years of good rain, but it will take a lot more rain to get us out of this drought. So I hope you'll give us your time and listen to what we have to say about what the conditions are here in the San Gabriel Valley on water. So I'll turn it over to Tom Love, our General Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles, and Mayor Fish, members of the council, again, once again, thank you for the opportunity to come before you and share with you some information about what's critical to every one of us, our water supply. On this first slide, I do want to point out, I was actually up here, this is up San Gabriel Canyon, or excuse me, Azusa Canyon, this is actually Morris Dam, and Morris Dam is named after one of the chief engineers of the Pasadena Water and Power, believe it or not, built back in the 1920s. This flow of water you see down here is traveling six hundred miles to reach this point from the state water project, from the Sacramento Bay Delta, and that is our turnout, we call it USG Three. And it doesn't run year-round, but it is running right now at the same time there's water behind San Gabriel Reservoir that's being released. All of that water's being captured into our aquifer, and if you've driven by the 605 freeway, two-ten interchange, and you see all those ponds with water in them, they're usually dry, that is, your water districts at work getting imported water and local rainfall back into the ground to meet our water supply needs. Very important. I should also acknowledge Ben Lewis from Golden State Water Company is here today. You've got some other water companies serving this Temple City, but Ben is here today. Thanks for the support, Ben. Appreciate that. So I'm going to talk about, Charles brought up the question of drought. The question is, is the drought really over? Well, parts of the state are doing really well, in fact, but if you look at our local region, and I'll go into it, if you look at the ten-year average, the fourteen-year average, the five-year average rainfall, we're still well below normal, and so we're trying to recover the groundwater basin by buying imported water, but also managing the local rainfall that we've gotten this spring. So I'll go into that, answer that question, are we still in the drought? Quickly, Charles already went over this, the district service area, we have five elected board members, they're elected by division. Our most recent board member, Jennifer Santana, was elected last year, and our total water demand is about 200,000 acre-feet a year. To put that in perspective, one acre foot is enough for about two to two-and-a-half families or households. So 200,000 acre-feet is almost 400,000 households. That's how much water is the demand within our service area. Now, this isn't necessarily directly about water, but we did adopt a strategic plan earlier this year, and I want to make sure you're aware of this and what things we're going to be working on, and I'll start from the bottom. Our fourth goal is what I'm doing today, it's community representation and engagement. We recognize we need to get out not only to the elected officials and civic leaders like yourselves, but the community at large, and make sure they're aware of the water situation and the importance of our good stewardship of our water supply through conservation and through good water management. Goal three is workforce and governance. We need to have a well-trained, efficient staff. Our board needs to govern in an efficient manner, so that's one of our goals. Financial integrity, financial sustainability, of course, that has to be in place in order to accomplish any of our goals. And lastly, and probably most importantly for the San Gabriel Valley, is water reliability and sustainability. The resilience during a drought, which we achieved, I think during the last drought, not quite over yet, I think is a testament to that water reliability, but there's probably more severe droughts in our future, we need to be prepared for that. So here's where we stand. I'm going to talk first about on a regional water supply and then on a local water supply, but here's where we got our water from. We do have recycled water, we serve about 3,000 acre-feet of recycled water, comes from sanitation district plants, both the Whittier Narrows and San Jose Creek Plant, all of that is for irrigation, parks, cemeteries, golf courses, civic centers in the southern part of our service area. We work with the Los Angeles County Flood Control on storm water capture. One of our objectives is, to the extent we can, help the cities with some of the MS4 compliance issues. We do that currently through our involvement with the COG Water Committee. On imported water, that's the water we receive from the state water project, which is, has been the supplemental source of water for the San Gabriel Valley for the last fifty-five years. And again, this is another depiction of that, we surprisingly, we actually get about eighty percent of our water needs met from our local rainwater. One hundred percent of the rain that falls in the San Gabriel Valley is captured, contrary to what you might believe when you see the rainfall and the river going, or the water going down the LA River to the ocean, it's not coming from the San Gabriel Valley. Only in the very wettest of years does any water escape and go to the ocean from our watershed. Of course, I mentioned the state water project, where we get our water through Metropolitan Water District, and then the Colorado River Aqueduct. The Colorado River Aqueduct water does not, is not used to recharge our groundwater basin, it's a little higher in salinity than the state water project. It is used in the treatment plants, so if there's treated water coming out of the treatment plants, it may have a blend of Colorado River water. So I think this is important in the context of the drought we've gone through and hopefully is nearly over, in terms of the resilience of the water supply system we have in Southern California in dealing with situations like this last drought, the most severe drought certainly in civilized history in Southern California. And Metropolitan has invested billions of dollars over the last three decades in the ability to store water and get water into storage, big pipelines and big reservoirs, and they were able to achieve a record level of storage, 2.7 million acre-feet, that is above and beyond their emergency storage level. That's the most water they've had in storage in their entire history, in 2012. They did not know that that was the beginning of this severe drought, and it was good they had that water in storage, because you can see it was drawn down during the drought, not quite to the emergency level down here, but it was drawn down. Had the drought continued, it could have gotten to critical lows, but we had a fairly, actually a really good year in Northern California in 2017, and they were able to move that water through the state water project and rebound their storage. At the end of 2019, they are projecting, with the wet year we've had over the past winter, that they will have set a new record for water in storage. That's wonderful news, we just don't know when, or how severe, or how long the next drought will happen, but we know it will come, and so it's good to be prepared for that kind of situation. So from an imported water supply, we're in really good shape. Both on the Colorado River, it's seen the best year it has in quite a while, it's still fairly critical, but it's in good supply, and the state water project is in really good shape. The issue is, we have to buy that water. We're not paying for the water itself, we're paying for the system and the infrastructure and the pumping to move that water six hundred miles from Northern California to Southern California. So we'd rather not spend all our money on that water, but we know we have to, to restore the basin. From a local perspective, this is the rainfall over the last approximately fifteen years. I like to keep this slide in here, this is one of the wettest years in a hundred years, 2004-05, and I'll show you a chart later on to show you what that did for our basin. It was phenomenal, what happened. We have not seen rain anywhere near that. Since that date, you can only see one, two, three, four, and this year, five years that were above average. The rest of them have been well below average. So our ten-year average rainfall is twenty percent less than the long-term average, so we're still making up for lost water or water that we never received in the groundwater basin. And this shows you the level of groundwater, we use the Baldwin Park Key Well as our main indicator for management of the basin, and this chart shows you, this is elevation above sea level, water level, the blue lines are the water level above sea level. This band, the green and red, are where we want to be. We want to be between those two bars. I mentioned 04-05, you can see we got below the red bar, and in one year, we did really well with that really phenomenal winter. Eleven-twelve was pretty good, and we restored, didn't quite come up to the top of the operating range, but we came close, and then the drought. And again, like Metropolitan Storage, which was used to meet our water supply needs during the drought, we, the producers in the basin, used the water stored underground to meet our water supply needs, and we did draw the basin down to a historic low. In November of 2018, we hit a historic low. This darker shaded blue represents the purchased water, the imported water that has been stored in the basin to help preserve the basin's health. And so you can see the difference between the natural or local water and the imported water that has been purchased to store on the ground to keep our basin at a healthy level, and you can see, beginning about November of last year, when we started delivering more water, it started coming back up this spring, we've still got rainwater stored behind the reservoirs up the canyon, and it will continue to rise, hopefully pretty close to that lower line of 200 feet above sea level. But you can see how the basin is an important management tool, it's a really great asset we have here in the San Gabriel Valley, because we don't have to build a dam to store this water, we just have to get it into the ground, and it stores itself, but we need water in order to put it in the ground to store it. So as we're going out, one of the things we talk about, because we're not quite out of the drought in the San Gabriel Valley, is we need to continue the phenomenal job this community has done in water conservation and water use efficiency. During the drought, the entire San Gabriel Valley, without too much difficulty, met the governor's mandate for water restrictions, not every location, but generally in the San Gabriel Valley. The community rose to the occasion, they let their lawns go brown for a year or two, and we complied, and we are not seeing, we're seeing the rebound, but we're not seeing it come back up to anywhere near what it was prior to 2013. But we continue the effort, continue to encourage conservation, water use efficiency. We have new state laws requiring certain water efficiency standards, but Upper District has rolled out several programs, one, the Large Landscape Survey and retrofit program, about two-and-a-half million dollars, almost entirely funded with state and federal grants to convert large landscapes, parks, schools, and other large landscapes to improve the efficiency, put in new irrigation controllers, redesign their irrigation system so they do not waste water. Of course, our sustainable gardens, which we have in many of the cities, smart gardening workshops, education for, actually, the gardening staff, the people who go out and maintain people's homes, and then residential and commercial rebates. This year is our 60th anniversary. Upper District, the voters of our service area voted to establish the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District in November of 1959, and in January of 1960, we were incorporated. So we're going to use that to emphasize the importance of this continued water management for our future. And so, I know I went over a lot of information very quickly, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? Council have any questions?
Yeah.
Yep.
No questions.
Thank you very much for that information.
Okay.
We appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item B, adoption of resolutions confirming appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, and Transportation and Public Safety Commission. Do you want me to call them up now?
Um, can I do a little brief summary?
Yes, yes, yes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Pursuant to Section 1103 of the City Charter, members of all commission and board of the city shall be appointed by the City Council and shall serve at the pleasure of said City Council. After the final, after the final interview of commissioners applicants, on Friday, July 12, City Council appointed nine commissioners, three to the Parks and Recreation, three to the Planning Commission, and three to the Transportation and Public Safety Commission. These commissioners will serve a two-year term, which will end on June 30, 2020. Tonight, City Council is requested to adopt a resolution confirming the appointments and direct staff to administer the oath of office to the commissioners.
Thank you. Can I please have our commissioners come up to the front?
Motion. Need a motion?
Do we?
Mayor, Mayor Fish.
Can I get a, can I get a motion?
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 19-5410, confirming appointment of commissioners to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Resolution 19-5409, confirming appointment of commissioners to the Planning Commission, and adopt Resolution 19-5411, confirming appointment of commissioners to the Transportation and Public Safety Commission with terms ending June 30, 2020, and request that the city clerk administer the oath of office to our new commissioners. Our second?
You can't hear me? I?
That I will bear. That I will dare.
You're ready, just.
And I will. For the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the United States. Of the Constitution of the United States. I take occupation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of occupation. And that I will. Well faithfully discharge. For duties of office. I will. Thank you.
Oh, that's what I heard.
Are we taking a photo, or?
Do we want a photo, Jerry?
Yes, it might be nice.
Do you want us, do you want us to?
Sure. Of course. Will you be our doctor?
Okay.
Yeah, no, you can't. Yeah, we're, we're two weeks. Councilmember Yu, are you? Just sit in between a little bit. No, this way. There you go. All right. Okay, Jeffrey, work this way. Okay.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Very exciting. It is. Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue our agenda with item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The City Council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. I have two people so far, Mylin, I think it is, from the library?
It's Meiling. I should write it phonetically next time. Hi, I'm Meiling. I am the children's librarian at Temple City Library.
Welcome.
And I am here because Jing is out of town, she actually went to China with her family, so she's spending some time with her family. So I'll be here, and I am the acting in charge at the library for the next month and a half or so. So we're looking at the August calendar, August 3rd is the last day of our summer discovery program, and to celebrate that, we have a free concert scheduled, and this is a concert that's sponsored by the LA County Board of Supervisors, it's part of the LA County Arts Commission's Free Concerts in Public Spaces program. So we're having Jessica Fishel, and she is a singer-songwriter, and she has a kind of a jazz gypsy swing with multi-ethnic French-Chinese-American heritage, some Shanghai jazz thrown in there, so it should be exciting. And following that, we will have an award ceremony for all of our completions of the summer discovery program, all of the games, give out some awards to people that have completed the most games or completed first, and have a little ice cream social for everybody that participated. We also have restarted our Intro to Art and Paint Night programs, so once a month, we have an outside artist come in, and he does an hour lesson with children, teaching them different techniques with painting, and then there's an hour and a half program for adults and teens, teaching new techniques and kind of guiding them through creating their own artwork. And August 17th, we're having a party puppet show, and it's kind of a comedy-based family show with big puppets and songs and fun, and it should be entertaining. On the 24th, I'm going to do a toddler art program, there have been a lot of parents asking for more programs for little ones, so we're gonna do some toddler art, and they don't have to clean up the art supplies, I will clean it up for them. And that's about it. There's a lot of other things going on, we're always busy at the library, so we welcome you anytime to come and visit and drop by and maybe participate in some of our programs.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Ms. Lucy Lu.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, City Manager, fellow city staff. Good evening. I'm here to remind everybody, this coming Thursday is our Area 7 Neighborhood Watch, 5:30 to 7:30, we're at St. Luke's this time, so we have a nice big hall, well-ac, so we don't have to worry about being too hot, and this is the fourth to the last of the meeting. This year has gone by very fast, we're into July, we have, after this, if you miss this meeting, we have August, September, and October, and we're done for the year. If you have not seen our presentation, please do make an effort to come out. Recently, we've had not mass shootings, but we've had shootings in places where you don't think of, you know, going to Costco and then you hear, you know, shots ring out, so the presentation is on how to survive a massive, an active shooter. goes on how to survive a massive, an active shooter. This is a great chance for everybody to learn how to run, hide, fight. And City, Brian, our Public Safety Supervisor is going to give a talk about Stop the Bleed, and that could be used anywhere. You know, we experienced earthquakes. If you are unfortunately hurt in an earthquake and you're bleeding out, you can self-help, or you can help someone who's bleeding out. Or if you pass by an automobile accident on the freeway, you can help somebody. So these two presentations are very, very valuable, especially, you know, considering the things that we've been going through lately. So please make an effort to come out. If not, you know, always come and enjoy the nice street tacos that the city provides, you know, socialize, hear what the deputies have to say, learn about, you know, how to protect your home, your vehicle, your person, and, you know, just hear what your neighbors are asking about. It's always a very dynamic meeting. People ask, sometimes people ask similar questions, but, you know, oftentimes they ask things that pertain to events that have been taking place in their own neighborhood. Again, this coming Thursday, July 18, 5:30 to 7:30 at St. Luke's, everybody is welcome. You don't have to live in the area. If you haven't been to one, please take opportunity and come out. And before I go, I want to thank you. I'm excited about the new commissioner appointments, particularly Transportation and Public Safety. So I'm looking forward to seeing things possibly, you know, picking up or doing, or being done a little differently. You know, new dynamics is always great. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lucy. Are there any other public comments? Gonna close public comments, move on to Item 7, Consent Calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
We have, we do have one resolution, so we're gonna need a roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Moving on to Item 8, Public Hearing. Introduction and First Reading of Ordinance Number 191036, Amending Title IX Zone Regulations, Chapter 1 of the Temple City Municipal Code, Adopting the Temple City Zoning Map, Repealing the Downtown Specific Plan, and Adopting an Amendment to the Temple City Mid-Century General Plan Update and Crossroads Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, thank you. Mr. Forbes and I will do a brief introduction, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Remers for the presentation this evening and our discussion. Before you tonight is the cumulative work of many stakeholders, Planning Commission, and the hard work of staff. Compliments to Mr. Remers and Mr. Forbes for all their hard work in bringing this forward, along with our consultant Placeworks. What we bring forward to you today is really about meeting the goals and the intention of the adopted, well, not so newly adopted anymore, but fairly newly adopted general plan. It was done about a little more than a year ago. So with that, we'll be going through a good discussion. We've had individual discussions as well to kind of, I get an idea of where we're at. Mr. Forbes will talk about kind of the intention of tonight as well, to see where we can get some, if there's good consensus across the board about a vast majority of these items today. We're looking forward to adopting those, and then where there are some potential questions. If they are so warranted that we will come back, go through the Planning Commission again, and then revert to the old zoning code until those revisions are made. But with that, I turn it over to Mr. Forbes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As Mr. Cook mentioned, and as you remember, a little over, about a year and a half ago, the City Council adopted the Mid-Century General Plan, which, as you know, is the broad policy document that sets the blueprint for future development of the city, and at a very broad, big-picture level, sets where the city is gonna go in the coming years, specifically with regards to its built environment. There's many different ways that we go about implementing the general plan, but the primary way and the way that everyone is most familiar with on a day-to-day basis is the zoning code, which establishes how every property in the city can be used and how it can be developed. So the biggest piece of the general plan implementation plan, and the first big piece that we're bringing forward to you, is the comprehensive update of the zoning code. The zoning code has not been comprehensively updated since the city was incorporated in 1960, so there are big pieces of the code that have been unchanged since then, and it shows. So it is time to take a comprehensive look at everything and make sure that we're following best practices and implementing all of the pieces of the general plan so that we can move the community forward consistent with the vision laid out in that plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Remers, and I too wanna take the opportunity while I'm up here to recognize Mr. Remers for all of his work on this project. I know he's gonna recognize some more people, but I wanna recognize him. This has been an all-consuming project for him for the last, well, since the general plan was adopted pretty much, so for the last year and a half. So I wanna thank him for all of his work on it.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The process we've been through since the general plan was approved was designed as a three-phase process. The first phase was designed to develop certain sections of the zoning code, bring them to the Planning Commission one at a time, and hold community meetings with the Planning Commission to get input on those one at a time. So from March to December of 2018, we had seven meetings on the zoning code update. And then Phase 2 was to take the entire zoning code that we had developed up until that point and take it to the community. That was back in February of 2019, 20, February this year. We created an interactive zoning code website where people could zoom in, see the zoning map, they could interact with the website, they could fill out a questionnaire. We had more than a thousand people view it, and we had at least 40 responses that were submitted. And then we also, in conjunction with that, held a community meeting on February 21st, which was attended by more than 20 people, in order to explain how to use the website and explain what was in the zoning code and to have them fill out their questionnaires as well. And then the last phase was recently, we took all the community feedback that we'd received, we presented it to the Planning Commission, showed them the recommended changes based on that community feedback, and we had two meetings with them in June just on that subject of the zoning code. So I'd like to take this moment and thank the Planning Commissioners. Specifically tonight, we have Commissioner Lee, Chair O'Leary, and Commissioner Cordis. Thank you for your hard work and listening to my presentations ad nauseam. We also have tonight Mark Teague, who's with Placeworks, who's been providing help, writing drafts of the code, and listening to feedback from the community and giving us direction and advice on that, so. What I'd like to do tonight is just walk you through the most noteworthy changes in the new zoning code. We have a slide or two for each of the major sections of the code. The first two slides are in relation to Administration and Enforcement, that's Chapter 91C. We're proposing to allow for a pre-application meeting, which would be an informal meeting with applicants to discuss their applications, tell them what conditions might need to be placed on the project, let them know what issues might be seen up front. So that would be a new addition to the code. We're also proposing to require a neighborhood meeting if someone is going to propose a change to the zoning map, a change to the general plan, that they're proposing a new non-residential building that's greater than 25,000 square feet, or a new non-residential building with more than 25 units, and any project that has an EIR. We would want them to have a neighborhood meeting before it gets to the Planning Commission. And then also with public notices, we're proposing to extend the public notice period from 10 days to 14 days, so we would send out the public notice 14 days before the hearing. Right now, the code requires a 500-foot radius for commercial uses and 300 for residential uses. So we're proposing to make that a standard 300-foot radius, but require onsite public noticing. So they would have to have an onsite notice, and so that will likely make up for the reduction in radius. And then also require posting of the public notice on the city website. Still on the Administration and Enforcement section, right now, the code is silent about how we should handle changes to projects that have already been approved. So we're recommending some changes that would specify clearly to staff what needs to go back to the original decision-maker and what can be handled by staff. So if the change doesn't meet some specific criteria, then it would need to go back to the commission or to the council for review. We're proposing to have the Planning Commission review major site plan reviews that are more than seven dwelling units or a non-residential project more than 10,000 square feet in size. Otherwise, if it's smaller than those two things, then the approval would stay with the director, as it is now. We're also proposing a minor exception permit, which would look similar to a variance. It would only be for a minor deviation from the code up to 10% to 15%, and that's for some height, for setbacks, and for parking spaces. That would be reviewed by the director, and there are specific findings that would have to be met for that. And then lastly on-
Mr. Remer may ask a question?
Sure.
So is it 10% or is it 15%? How do we decide when does it apply?
So in the code, if you just give me a moment.
Right.
In the code, there are some standards that would allow for a 10% reduction and some that would allow for a 15% reduction.
So states in the code, what is?
Yes.
Page 19.
19.
There you go, thank you. So for a front yard setback and a side yard setback, it would allow a deviation of 15% for the rear and for height, and for the number of vehicle parking spaces, it would allow for a 10% reduction.
Scott, I have a question. For the pre-application meeting, is there a charge?
There would be a charge, yes, yeah.
Do we know what the charge is, or does it depend on the project?
At this point, we haven't updated the fee schedule for that fee yet. Generally, what I have found in other cities is that the pre-application meeting is only used by larger projects, and those are applicants who want to have that meeting with staff. So they would be very willing to pay to have that service done.
Thank you.
The last item on this slide is temporary use permits. Right now, we don't have that, or allowance for that in the code. This would allow staff to review requests for some sort of use that's temporary, whether it's an outdoor fundraiser, whether it's a special event that's going on on private property, or a construction trailer, or seasonal sales, like a Christmas tree lot or a pumpkin lot. These could be handled through a temporary use permit, and it would allow staff to put on some conditions that make sense, maybe based on the timing, the hours of operation, how the parking would work, and so forth.
I didn't see that on your summary.
I have a question.
Is it, that's not on your summary sheet, is it? I didn't see that on there.
It may not be.
Okay. And that's section, that section is that?
That's in 91C6.
91C6?
Yes, on page 23.
Okay.
Are you talking about the new temporary?
Yeah. No, I was just talking about the, yeah, the new temporary use permits. I didn't see that on the summary, that's why I didn't.
I apologize.
When you put it up on the board, I wasn't familiar with that one.
I apologize.
That's on page 23?
Yeah, page 23 of Article C.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
I have a question. How are you gonna let people know about that particular permit? And the only reason I'm saying, I'm thinking of like the fundraising, I mean, how are they supposed to know they're supposed to get a permit if they haven't before? Or are you just gonna, is it gonna be kind of like?
It will take some time to let people know about the requirements and give them, kind of reach them and tell them to come in and get a permit. Generally, the Christmas tree sales lots and the pumpkin sales lots already come in, they have connections with us because they require a business license. Often, we'll have people come in and say, "I wanna put a pod in my front yard, how long can I have it? Or I wanna put it in the public right of way, how long?" And right now, there's no permit process for us to explain to them how to do that. So often, it's when people come to us seeking our permission. For instance, we'll have a business come in and say, "Well, we wanna have a special event, you know, what issues are you going to have?" And is there a permit process? Then now, we have a process to vet out some of those issues.
I might suggest along those lines that maybe things like this that are gonna affect the public directly, groups, things like that, maybe at some point, maybe we can do an outreach, or maybe put it in a connect magazine to highlight some of these changes that will affect them. Because, you know, I mean, Mayor Fish brings up a good point that some of these groups still think, "Well, I've never done it before. What do you mean I have to do it now?" And the last thing I would want to see is they find out after they've been cited.
Correct.
That's not a good way of finding that out. So, you know, some type of education format, I'm sure we could come up with several ideas on that, and I think that should take care of that issue.
And then, is there gonna be a charge?
For a temporary use permit, yes, yeah. So again, we haven't brought the fee res-
Oh, is there a charge?
I know, but I'm not, I mean, it's fundraising, how do you pay for a permit or fundraising? Sorry.
We'll come back with a fee resolution at a later time, so you'll be able to set what you want for that fee.
Okay, thank you.
The next section is in regard to off-street parking, so this is parking that's occurring on the site of the development. One of the challenges we've had is parking on mini-malls and sites where retailers are leaving, and they're leaving some vacancies, and then the property owners are trying to fill those vacancies. So one recommendation we have is allowing those types of sites and properties that are adjacent to the downtown parking lots to develop a parking study that looks at what is the appropriate parking requirement for this site, given the uses that are there presently. So it's an idea to provide some flexibility to the property owner, but still have some level of professional engagement looking at the exact parking demand for the site.
Scott, I forgot to ask you when we met and we went over this. Do we give the interested parties a list of parking study persons who do this? I mean, I wouldn't have a clue. How do you find a person who does a parking study?
We can do that. We do that for other services, like for radius mapping labels, so we could put together a list of companies that we know provide that service.
Okay, thank you.
Were you aware of any of our business currently that offer valet parking? I'm not sure that I've seen anybody that does that. I'm just kinds of mind that the Camellia Square, that would probably be a good area that they might think about doing something like that.
And they are interested. Did they call you, Scott, though?
Not yet.
No.
I think they talked about doing that.
Was that Camellia Square or TJ Maxx?
No, it was Camellia Square wanted to do it in Chatham.
Yeah, so.
That's what it was.
Yeah. So this would allow them to consider those things. That's a good idea.
So in this code, we're also providing some alternative parking strategies, and then, so the code will have some standards. So a certain amount of the parking can be valet, a certain amount of the parking could be tandem. They could provide some off-site parking, so it provides some basis on which to review that and for us to make sure that there's still sufficient parking for the customers, and it's not spilling over into the residential neighborhoods. So one quick question. Does tandem parking include, I don't know what the term is called, you know how they have stacked parking? Is that considered tandem also? Yes. So if you're, whether you're stacking the vehicles horizontally or vertical, vertically through a lift, that would be considered tandem, yeah. And then just the bullet here in the middle was that we're now addressing tandem parking. We would allow a certain amount of parking at a site to be tandem parking. If it's residential, both of those tandem spaces would have to be available to the same unit. If it's non-residential, they would have to have a valet on site to help move the cars around. So another question on that. So in terms of how the changes to tandem parking affect accessory dwelling units, those would still be treated separately, right? So the accessory dwelling unit parking requirement will be, it can't be tandem with the unit in the front. Yes, this does not affect the parking for ADUs. That is set by the state. Okay. So the next section is regarding signs. For the most part, what we did is we looked at the sign code in the downtown and found that it seemed to be working very well in most instances. When the downtown specific plan was developed, there was a lot of work put into the sign code for that area. Because it seems to be working very well, we've, what we're proposing to do is apply that to the current C2 and C3 zones. In addition to that, another noteworthy change is we're proposing to have the Planning Commission review major sign permits, so that would be monument signs, murals, if you're relocating an iconic sign, a sign, whether someone's developing a sign program, an electronic changeable copy sign, those would have to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. And then- And then, we're also proposing two new types of sign permits. One would just be a creative sign permit, so if someone wanted to do an interesting three-dimensional design, for instance, they could go through a special process for that. And then, if someone wanted to preserve an iconic sign, like the Wonder Cleaner sign, and then change the text on it, or make a minor modification to it that doesn't affect the iconic design of it, then they could apply for this iconic sign permit. The desire here is to keep the sign, but allow people to change the text to reflect a new tenant.
I see that in the definitions. We don't define iconic. Is that, how are we going to define that? Is that gonna be on a case-by-case basis? You mentioned one example, Wonders Cleaners, who I think we're all familiar with, but I'm not sure. I was looking for that in the definitions, but I didn't see it.
It may not be in the definition so much as in the findings in order to determine what is an iconic sign.
So there is somewhere in here that-
Maybe some criteria for-
That we would use.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all right, you don't need to-
Okay. The next section is regarding the R-one zone, so this is the single-family zone. What we're proposing to make a change to how we deal with the mass of a structure in the front yard. What we're proposing is in the front forty feet of a site, the building can only take up or 25 percent of that area in regards to floor area. So in this graphic below, the orange area is the front forty feet. That's 2,000 square feet in size. So the structure, the only 500 square feet of the structure can be located within that orange area. This would mean getting away from what we have now, which is a 40-degree angle encroachment plane. So you would draw a 40-degree angle from the front property line, and the building has to stay within that angle. And then, there's also a code requirement that says the second floor has to be set back on average 10 feet from the first floor. So those two would go away, and we would just be looking at mass in terms of floor area ratio.
And that floor ratio only applies to first 40 feet, right?
Yes.
So it's 25 percent of the 40 feet.
Yes.
Maybe hard to achieve.
I have a question about that. So what's being proposed is that front 40 feet would apply regardless of parcel, lot size, and dimension? So like, for example, if you had a lot that was wider than deeper, that 40-foot would apply to the entire front of that lot that's, say, 120 feet wide but 60 feet deep?
Yes, if you had a very narrow, if you had a very, not narrow lot, but a lot that wasn't very deep, this would apply in the same way. But that case, in that case, you would be ripe for a variance case, most likely, in that you have an unusually shaped lot. Most lots are deeper than they are wide. That type of lot is wider than it is deep, so that would be ripe for a variance in that case.
But is that obvious in the code that it's written that the variance would be an option?
Well, if I could, I don't know if, I mean, there are plenty of Y lots, and they're not that uncommon, while there may be fewer, but that doesn't mean that they're not uncommon. And I don't, I'm not sure we want to write a code where if you happen to be falling to that category not of any fault of your own, then automatically you'll need the variance. And variance costs, does cost money, and it takes time. And the other part is that with variance, there is no way to know for sure how much you can get, so you kinda need to go with, try a design, go for variance, and if it's not successful, then you have to redo your design. So I have a little trouble with this proposed change. Thank you.
We do have some additional slides we can show you to show you where we've been coming from, and if the council likes, we can provide additional information on that floor area requirement. We're also proposing to reduce the maximum ceiling height to 26 feet, and then base the maximum height of a structure on lot width. So the wider a lot is, the taller a structure would be. Right now, we require a maximum of 26 feet, no matter the width of a lot, and we're proposing 28 feet if it's less than 75 feet in width, and 32 feet if it's more than 75 feet in width. The idea is that the wider a lot is, the wider the side yard setback's gonna be. And so there's a ratio of height to width that is still being kept there. The other benefit is that, right now, the 26-foot height requirement locks a lot of the designers into certain architectural styles that have a very low pitch. So providing a little bit more height would allow them to have some taller pitched buildings, which would allow for some additional variety in architecture.
Madam Mayor, this is another one I have trouble with. The planning commission way back when we, many years ago, when we did the residential design guidelines, we have decided, at least at the time, to think at a time was that Y lots actually create wider mass. So that's why for Y lots, we actually asked for the side yard setback to be 10 percent, a minimum five feet or 10 percent of the lot width. And it was a conscious decision to say that Y buildings tend to create more mass. So I personally would feel a little uncomfortable now we've got a Y building, and then we're gonna increase the height of the building. So I would rather we stay with what we have.
I have a question. Was that the main reason was just because of the design that you wanna increase the height?
Yeah, we had a focus group about a year ago with the designers and builders in town, and one of the pieces of feedback that we got at the time, because the zoning code update, we were going through the planning commission at the time. One of the pieces of feedback we got from them was a request to increase the height so that they could do some additional architectural styles.
It doesn't seem like it's two feet, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't seem that substantial.
No, that, I mean, that, my opinion is fairly substantial, so.
You, two feet?
Well, it's about 10, well, it may not be quite 10 percent, it's maybe 8 percent rise in height, increase in height. I mean, at least my personal opinion is that we, people complain about marginalization, people complain about bulk of buildings, and, I mean, this applies when a lot is wide.
Correct.
It seems to me that if a lot is narrow, or maybe it's the overall bulk is a little less, but now you, not only the building is wider, it's taller. So it's like, you know, imagine, put that in people's term. I mean, a shorter guy that, you know, and then, and it's all, you know, just a big guy, big, big house, in my opinion. So, it's not only why it's tall.
Well, I have another question. As far as it stopping the style, don't we really wanna keep it more of a residential? I mean, I don't understand what style they're trying to accomplish if you're gonna make it higher. I mean, is it something that's gonna be just odd? That doesn't fit in with the, with the other structures? I mean, does that, does that make sense?
Right, right. There's, so with the existing code, most of the roofs are built at what's called a 312 or a 412 pitch, which is pretty low. Once you get to 212, you have to use basically a fat, flat roof material. So 312, 412 is pretty low. That would be common to Spanish-style architecture, craftsman architecture, prairie architecture. But if someone wanted to use, for instance, in some of the communities just south of Las Tunas, some of those blocks there, you have some sites that are more English Tudor Revival, some that have more of a storybook design, those have a higher pitch. And so some of the structures, you think of a brick house with a higher pitched roof, those have a higher pitch. So in order to meet that style, you wouldn't, you couldn't put a 412 roof on a style of that type of house. One thing to keep in mind is that the, allowing the roof to go from 26 feet to 28 feet, or even to 32 feet, it's not that the whole structure is going to increase in height. It's that the pitch of the roof is going to increase in height. So a span of the structure, maybe six feet wide, will be taller, but the actual mass of the structure is not, the whole structure is not increasing in height because we are setting a top plate height of 26 feet. So the ceiling will not be more than 26 feet.
Okay, so it's just basically the pitch of the roof?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Another thing we were looking at in the code-
So what are we gonna do? Vince has raised an issue, I guess. Are we gonna take these all at the end, or are we gonna decide now?
No, you need to let the presentation go, public comment, so that you can hear if the public has anything to weigh in on that, and then have your discussion and decision-making after that.
Better write these down.
I wrote down a couple of things, yeah.
The second one here was what we saw as a peculiarity in the code that seemed like a discrepancy. Someone is allowed to subdivide a 100-foot lot into two 50-foot lots, which gives the idea that the minimum lot width is 50. But if you're doing a flat lot or any other type of subdivision, you have to have a 60-foot wide lot. Staff would just prefer to have one standard, no matter the configuration, so whether it's 50 or 60. We were proposing to allow a 50-foot minimum, whether it's a lot split or whether it's a flat lot subdivision.
And Madam Mayor may also make a comment. I think as we're, instead of decreasing, we should go back and standardize to a 60-feet lot. So I don't know why we should go back to, it was, yes, there was a discrepancy, but I think unifying it doesn't mean that we should go back to smaller lot sizes.
I agree. Okay, write it down.
Another thing we are recommending is reducing the maximum lot coverage for large lots. So right now, we have a standard 50 percent maximum lot coverage, no matter the size of a lot. And we do have some very large lots in town, 12,000 square feet, even some that are higher, 15,000 square feet. That would allow basically a 7,000-square-foot house, or in some cases, 6,000 square feet. When we see houses of that size, it can get very strange. The house starts to look like an institutional use or a commercial use. So we're recommending to reduce the lot size from 50, maximum lot coverage from 50 percent to 35 percent. And so there's a formula in the code to reduce lot coverage as the lots get larger in size.
Mr. Rem, how often do we see houses that are actually 50 percent?
It is unusual because most of the new houses are two stories.
Right.
So they don't get to the maximum lot coverage.
Yeah. Well, if I could give a little background of the 50 percent for single-story building, was that way back when, when we put together the residential design guideline, we were going to, instead of penalizing people, what the suggestion was to incentivize single-story. So I do appreciate what staff is trying to do, but I would think, I would suggest that we consider perhaps not reducing it at all, and still be able to incentivize a single-story construction by allowing slightly larger floor ratio.
That would just be, if it was a single-story-
Yeah. Currently, the 50 percent only applies to single-story.
That's a pretty long house, right?
Not so much the long, yeah, it would go further back in the lot, yes.
Another code requirement that-
Can I, so Vince keeps bringing up things that he thinks should remain the same and has given some reasons. Or can we go into the reasons, perhaps, why change? Is that gonna, should we do that now, or do we wanna wait until the action's actually been put on the table?
You wanna do it now?
Uh, 'cause, I mean, I'm not the expert that Vince is in this area, so I don't know whether that, what he's saying makes more sense, or what you guys are saying makes more sense. I know that you and the experts on our staff have given a lot of thought, and you have the expertise to make these recommendations, but there has been a, you know, I wouldn't say an objection brought up, but maybe another, a view. And I would like to perhaps explore the opposite side of that view so that when it comes time for me to make that decision, I'll be able to make an informed decision on that issue.
Mr. Remers has a number of additional sub-presentations, or however we wanna refer to them, that go into a lot more detail on some of the issues that are being raised. So I think it would be, it would be probably easier to get through the main presentation, and then after the comments-
The thing that we agree upon, there's no sense in going over those. So I agree, that's fine, as long as at some point, we're hopefully gonna get that.
So I'm trying to take good notes, so we can come back to them.
Yeah, and I'm trying to not really interrupt your presentation, but I felt that if we don't bring it up now, while we're going through it so much, it's easy to skip over.
And I have no problem with that. I mean, whether you bring it up now or later, it's gonna be brought up, so.
The last two are kind of in regard to landscaping and hardscaping. The, one is to set a maximum hardscape, or if you think of it as concrete area standard for the front yard. So besides the driveway, hardscaping can't take up a certain percentage of the front yard. Our desire is, as people put in drought-tolerant landscaping, they don't just pave the entire front yard or replace landscaping with hardscaping. And then require landscaping in front of a front yard fence. If someone's gonna put in a front yard fence, we'd like to put some landscaping in front of that fence.
How does this maximum hardscape standard deal with, like, the water issues that were brought up earlier? I mean, are we competing with that, or we, we think that on their side, they want more hardscape.
Well, there's, there's three-
Or no, they would want less hardscape, yeah.
Yeah, there's kind of three things going on. One is to reduce water usage, one is to get more stormwater in the ground, and the third is, I would say, just a community enhancement look that the community's looking for. There are other alternatives beyond just hardscape, and we would want to point people to using drought-tolerant plants and placing lawns with that, rather than replacing their lawn with concrete.
So this is to encourage that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Also, in the R-one zone, right now, we have an incentive program. There are certain key design features we've been seeking from people. That's human-scale design, mature landscape, and a front yard porch. Those have been, that incentive program's been very successful. And if people provide those things, they get additional square footage for their new house. It's been so successful that it's basically rote. Most of our designers, now every application comes in and proposes that. So because it's become so part of the design of the community, we recommend making those requirements instead of incentives. And then, right now, we also have an incentive for the, putting the garage in the rear. That is one of the least-used incentives. So what we're proposing to get more people to use that is to, we're proposing to increase the rear and front yard setback by five feet, but if they put the garage in the rear, they get the five feet for the front yard and the rear yard back. The other new incentives that we're proposing is if people preserve mature trees, or if they use a defined architectural style, then they can get the additional incentives. The other thing we're proposing with the incentive system is to reduce, right now, maximum FAR is set at 3,500. We're proposing to reduce that to 3,300. But the new incentive system allows them to get back up to the 4,000 max using 700 square feet of incentives. So overall, the maximum size of a house will not be decreased.
But incentives are in addition to what was, what we put, what we had before, right? So basically, in order to make the 700, you have to meet, you have to meet all the requirements like mature trees, defined architectural styles, and what else?
Garage in the rear.
Garage in the back.
Right. And the multifamily zones, which in this city is the R-two and the R-three zones, we're proposing a new style of site plans. So instead of designing our sites around the driveway and making the driveway the central feature of a site, we're proposing to make common open space the central feature of the site. We're hoping that that provides more of a garden, open-space feel to our multifamily zones. What that means for the R-three zone is that most- Um, what that means for the R-three zone is that most likely, the parking will be underground in order to meet the requirement. Um, so instead of seeing driveways, um, you'll see the driveways placed underground. Um, the, just a reminder that with the general plan, we increased the density in the R-three zone to thirty-six dwelling units per acre. Um, so that means they will be able to get, with the additional cost of putting the parking underground, they will be able to get additional dwelling units. Um, also in the R-three zone, we're proposing to allow three stories in all parts of the R-three zone, um, but if it's adjacent to an R-one zone, um, they have to have additional setbacks on the second and third floor, so.
Mr. Reamer, may I ask you a couple of questions?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, personally, I like this, 'cause I, and I've designed using the Garden City ordinance. But, one of the question that I, after we talked about this before, I start thinking that, so, uh, designer were to come in and said, well, or the owner wanted to come in, so I still wanna do the driveway in between, it's not allowed. They cannot do that.
Well, in the R-two zone and the R-three zone, they are allowed to have the driveway at grade.
Uh-huh.
But the amount of open space that's required to meet, they likely couldn't do it in the R-three zone.
Essentially eliminates that.
Yeah, in the R-two zone, they most likely will be doing it at grade.
Then the next question is, you know, affordability is always a, 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 something that we need to consider. So are we, even though we're increasing this, the number of units, uh, in the spirit of the increasing housing, would this also increase the cost so that nobody can, I mean, the affordability might be, uh, because underground parking is definitely quite expensive. So we have, uh, made perhaps an inadvertent, uh, effect of increasing the cost of housing with this ordinance.
Yeah, I, we have not done an economic analysis to compare whether the density increase has, um, is being picked up by the additional increase in cost for putting underground parking. Um, I would say, in other cities such as Pasadena, who have such a policy, we have seen substantial growth in that city using this ordinance, so it is feasible, um, and it is to, to develop in this way.
I've, I've, I worked there before, so I understand, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Jim? Uh, with the new general plan, um, we created some mixed-use designations on the general plan map. Um, under the existing zoning code and existing zoning map, we don't have a mixed-use designation. So, um, we had to develop a whole new chapter on mixed-use zones. We're proposing two different zones, there's the mixed-use low zone, that's for the area, um, south of Lower Zusa, uh, both west and east of Temple City Boulevard, um, shown in light purple on this map on the upper right. Um, that, because that zone is kind of in transition, uh, there's some single-family, there's some industrial, there's some commercial. Um, we're, we have created a very restrictive list of uses there, um, in order to deal with, to create a transition appropriately. Um, in the mixed-use medium zone, which is, um, more traditional mixed-use, um, along, for instance, along Las Tunas, um, between Cloverly, uh, by Cloverly, uh, on Temple City Boulevard, north of Las Tunas, in this darker purple color. Um, there, we would have a, a more standard mixed-use ordinance based on the existing downtown-specific plan. So, ground floor retail with, um, residential above, so. And then we looked at the downtown-specific plan standards to help set us standards for this zone. Uh, for the commercial zones, right now in the code, um, we have eight different zones. Um, so it can make, uh, implementing the code a little bit difficult. Um, we're proposing to take the zones that we have now and, um, put them into, compress them into three different zones. Uh, the first would be the neighborhood commercial zone, um, that would be the neighborhood, the commercial zones that are adjacent to single-family neighborhoods, such as along Rosemead Boulevard or along Lower Zusa. Um, again, like the mixed-use low zone, um, we crafted a very restrictive list of the uses that would be appropriate in those zones, trying to create compatible, compatibility between these commercial zones and the single-family zones. Um, we've taken the downtown-specific plan, and we've, uh, absorbed that into the code, and have created the, um, Las Tunas Commercial and the Downtown Core. Um, the Downtown Core is the area in dark red along Las Tunas, between Kaufman and Cloverly. Um, the goal there is to create a very economically vital district, um, that's something we heard a lot from the community, they wanted to, to help support the downtown. So in order to do that, what we are recommending is to have a very, um, small list of uses that would create that economic vitality. So, restaurant uses, retail uses, personal service uses. Um, uses like offices and non-pedestrian-oriented uses would be allowed, um, either on the second floor, or they would be allowed in the Las Tunas cor- commercial zone, the area shown in red, um, west of Cloverly and east of Kaufman. Um, so we'd be trying to move offices to those areas and get more economically vital, um, uses in the Downtown Core. Um, lastly, just, I wanted to talk about process, and one thing that always comes up with the community is, well, if I have a project and, or I'm going to submit a project, would this ordinance apply to me? Uh, staff is recommending, and the way the ordinance has been drafted, is that all projects that are submitted before the effective date of this ordinance would use the existing code. So basically, if you've submitted an application under the existing code, you get to use the existing code. Um, if you submit after the effective date of the ordinance, you have to use the new code. And then, um, also for community members, uh, tonight's hearing, um, is occurring, uh, there will be a second reading of the ordinance on August twentieth, um, and then if all goes well, the, uh, ordinance would become effective on September twentieth, so. Again, the, what we're requesting you to do tonight is adopt the addendum to the EIR, um, introduce this ordinance, um, and then schedule the second reading for August twentieth, so that concludes part A of my presentation, so.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Mr. Reamer, just quick qualification, so if they submit after September twentieth, then they will have to comply with the new code?
Yes.
Now, I would assume there will be a few folks who have come to the counter and described their projects and stuff in the last couple of months, and, and, um, I don't know, we keep a record of that, do we, of who?
No, not really, we don't have a specific record.
Not really, so if they don't, if they miss this window, it's, um...
Well, describing a project and filing a application, I think are totally different.
Yeah, but it, it does take ti- some time for some of these applicants, 'cause they may come here and they go back working in the architectural design, and I'm just trying to think, um, whether two months is enough in my mind, where, for that, in case they... So if they, we happen to have a record of who have come, then would be good to let them know, hey, this is coming along. This stuff, uh, you gotta submit, or either submit before, submit after, you better use the new code.
We, we have been on, I, I understand what you're saying, it, it is, it does create a level of uncertainty. Um, we have been doing our best to tell people at the counter, especially our most common applicants,
Right, right.
They are very well, they are well aware of this ongoing application and, and this, um, this code update. Um, there may be people who filter through, who, um, don't know that this is going on, but our most common applicants are very aware that this is coming. Some of them are waiting with bated breath for the council to approve this. We have some multifamily projects that are in the works, where they're just waiting to get this done. We have some businesses that would like to submit a business license application or CUP application, but they can't until the council moves forward with this ordinance, so it's, it is kind of a balance that, that we're trying to meet as well.
Okay, well, I trust if somebody come to the counter, let's say, if we, assuming this passes tonight, you'll let them know that, hey, this is, something new is happening.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Do we go, wanna go ahead and?
If you can do public. Mayor Fish, if you wouldn't mind doing public comment, then we can come back to the council discussion, talk, get a little bit more in-depth in, in terms of the issues that have been brought up, particularly in the R-one zone, and Mr. Reimers did, does have some backup slides, so we can have a, what these, uh, a broader discussion, or deeper discussion about that, and walk through those.
Thank you, okay, I'd like to go ahead and open public comments. Anyone for public comments? Okay, I will go ahead and close public comments.
Okay, with that, um, with that, we do have some backup slides to a- assist in the discussion. Uh, there's been a couple, there's been some comments related to some concerns about, uh, the proposed standards in the R-one zone. Uh, so we'd like to take some time to articulate that. Uh, so with that, if you can just give us a quick moment, we'll be able to, we'll be able to, uh, we'll be able to walk through that a little bit. Uh, both on some three-D rendering, since I'm just some massing, uh, depictions to get a sense of, of, at least you can understand where staff and the consultant was coming from with some of these, some of these proposed, proposed changes.
Thank you. Uh, so one of the issues, as we were going through the general, um, the zoning code update, um, was some general concerns from the community about compatibility of new single-family houses, um, with the existing single-family housing stock. Typically, that looks at mass, just the plain bulk, if you were to drop a large rectangle on a, on a site, that's mass. So, um, how do you deal with that mass to seem, make it seem less massive? Um, and then also, just generally, um, height of the structure, that being two stories. Um, with the existing code, what we have are two requirements, I mentioned these briefly before. One is the average ten-foot setback, but from the second floor to the first floor, and a forty-degree angle, and I'll show you what those look like. What the code says now is at least fifty percent of the second floor elevation has to be set back or recessed ten feet from the front wall of the first story. One of the issues we have in dealing with that is that it sounds very plain, um, but we have a lot of issues in how that should be interpreted, as we have a lot of different designers and a lot of different styles of architecture. So for instance, we had to write a zoning code interpretation with seven different scenarios to demonstrate, here's what's acceptable, here's what's not acceptable, here, this meets the ten-foot setback requirement, this doesn't. Um, so it creates some uncertainty for the applicant, they think they've just submitted it, and it's meets the code, but it actually doesn't. Um, it makes it difficult for us in how to interpret what you do at the front porch, is that considered part of the, the first floor or not? And so that ambiguity can delay the process. Um, it also can re- result in some abnormal architecture. Um, the first floor of this structure basically has two wallplanes, there's the, the wall of the garage and then the wall of the house. Um, but the second floor has five different wallplanes, so you have this cascading effect on the second floor. Um, it, it can create, um, kind of more articulation that's really necessary, um, from an architectural perspective. And it can make some architectural styles unattainable, so in this design on the right, you have the second story and the first story aligned, and then you have another mass behind that. Um, I, I don't think many people would object to that design, but that might not be allowed under the present code. So that's what, kind of what we were dealing with.
Well, Mr. Reamer, I would, I would contend that the, the design on the right is not, is not attainable under your present, under your proposed, uh, design either, 'cause they have the, essentially pull, pull the building back. If they were to have, uh, flat front like that on the Spanish, they'd probably pull it back like quite a bit.
Well, if the tower element is less than five hundred square feet, it, it would meet the code.
But that's, uh, top and bottom floor together.
Right.
Uh, less than five hundred square feet, you said?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But isn't that a function of the, how big the front, the width of the lot?
It can be, we, we have some examples, um, we can show you of historical architectural examples to kind of show you why we're also bringing it up as well. So, and then we've also modeled it, and we have some three-D models to show you how the FAR requirements would, um, would, would be applied, so. Um, the other way we deal with, um, mass is to de, is to create an encroachment plane, so this is the forty-degree encroachment plane that exists now. Um, right now, we have a twenty-foot minimum setback, um, so you can see a, a small portion of the structure could possibly encroach within this plane. Um, so that portion of the structure would have to be removed. Um, under the new code, um, we would acquire a twenty-five-foot setback for the front yard, um, which the, a very small area of the structure, um, much less, would fall within that encroachment plane. So unless the encroachment plane is reduced to perhaps thirty-five degrees or thirty-five percent, um, it's not going to be as effective as it was in the past.
Uh, Ms. Reamer, again, I, perhaps I missed this, uh, we proposing twenty-five feet front yard setback throughout the city?
Yes, the minimum setback would be increased to twenty-five feet.
Huh.
And then if the garage is placed, if the garage is placed in the rear, then they can go back down to twenty feet.
Uh, I think to, um, Councilmember Man's point, if you have a wide lot, or shallow lot, actually, it could be wide and deep. If you have a shallow lot, um, 'cause your, your rear yard setback, it's, uh, it's already fifteen, plus twenty, so you cannot build thirty-five feet currently, and now you're saying that, uh, forty feet of your lot, you cannot put buildings on. Well, that, that's a hard one to, uh, to meet if you have a shallow lot.
So not deep.
Well, I know I couldn't build my house if I, if this rule applies.
So the...
Who else is not in Temple City?
Huh?
Your house doesn't have to comply with Temple City regulation, but...
Well, no, I meant, mean that the proposed regulation would, would make it difficult to, or impossible to design and build. 'Cause I, I do have a shallow lot.
And the rationale for this is?
Like, we're trying to get more people to use the garage in the rear incentive, so the idea was, um, if someone does place the garage in the rear, then they can reduce the setback down to twenty feet, so...
Which it is now.
Which it is what it is now.
Yeah, but, but then again, the, the issue of pushing people or forcing people to go to the back is you have a sh- narrow lot now, then you're, you need space for a driveway to get to the back, right? What's the minimum driveway width?
Ten feet.
So, there goes ten feet of your dri, of your, of your lot.
But, but it's an incentive, I mean, if, if it's something you wanna do, you have the possibility, you have the option. Um, if you don't, if you, if you don't want to use it, then you can build at the twenty-five.
And your concern is that if you have a small lot, this isn't gonna work?
Small lot, or shallow lot.
And how would you define... So shallow lot being forty feet, maybe?
No, seventy.
Seventy feet.
Yeah, well, six, seventy, eighty feet.
So on a seventy-foot, so a seventy-foot lot, under this proposal, uh, they would have to go back twenty-five feet.
And then minus the...
So that would leave them, what, forty-five feet, fifty-five feet?
And then you minus the fifteen feet for the rear yard setback, that gives you...
But then they get another five feet back if they put the garage in the back.
That's assuming that, uh, but you, but you lose ten feet of your side yard and all that, yeah.
Well, not every square peg's gonna fit in a round hole, I guess, you know, it's, uh...
And I think that's part of the difficulty in designing a zoning code, is that what we start from is a model lot. And a model lot is the, is a lot that meets the requirements of the code, which is fifty by one-fifty.
And I think, uh, I think, and I, I tend to agree with that, because I think, you know, it's gonna be difficult to, um, formulate a plan that fits every unique lot, and we have to have a starting point, and that starting point would be the typical lot. Um, and it can still apply for variances, I believe, as well.
Yeah.
And your concern with the variance is that, that costs extra money, there's no guarantee they're gonna get it.
There's time, yeah.
But it is, it is an option, and that would cover those unique lots that we can't legislate for individually.
But, but I believe there are plenty of lots that don't fit in this, the so-called model lot, and we're punishing a lot of people, uh, necessarily.
Well, I would imagine that if they, if they come up with a standard lot that's based on, on numbers, if it, if it, if it, if it, if it isn't, then it's not, it's not really a standard lot.
I don't think there's such thing as a standard lot, honestly. And, um, we've been working well with what we have thus far, in my mind, if it's not broken, I don't think we should fix it. I mean, cer- certain things that are being proposed, I think is good, but I think some of these are, in my mind, is rather onerous, um, and I think this, this will fall under one of those. It, if the goal is to c- c- help the situation where we have a Spanish-style or modern-style building, I mean, that could be a variance. I would rather that be the variance, rather than punishing folks that have a, you know, not any fault of their own, have a small lot or narrow lot.
I, actually, I don't know that that could be the variance, 'cause a variance requires the circumstances of the lot to be unusual, um, and as proposed, we would be saying, your desired use of the lot, um, you, you essentially want something extra, rather than wanting, uh, the same thing that's being given to everyone else. You wanna be able to go into, uh, or you wanna be able to use a certain kind of design where, um, what the variance would say is, you wanna be able to use the same design everyone else can use. So I, I, I don't think it actually could, could be used that way, just based on the legal standards for a variance. legal standards for a variance.
Now, I'm really confused. Okay, so can they use a variance? Or not?
Or, as proposed by Mr. Reamer's, they could. As proposed by Councilman Yu, i- i- if you want to have this sort of high-quality architecture, that's not the kind of thing that qualifies you for a variance, because there's no physical feature of your lot that makes it unusual to the extent that what you, that you are held back from doing what anybody else can do with it. If the physical feature of your lot, as, as Councilman Mann said, you have a somewhat unique lot and that it's wide but narrow, that's a, that's a physical feature that lends itself to a variance under the law. We would need to find some other tool, but a variance alone wouldn't work. And, and in terms of a tool, that would be something we'd want to go back and study with, with Mr. Reamers and, and Mr. Forbes, to be able to say, you know, how do we work with different tools for getting high-quality architecture? I don't know that we're, we're going to come up with that tonight.
Is there such thing as having two sets of standards based on the ratio of your lot width and depth? Because right now, it seems like a lot of the concerns stem from the non-standard lots that are more wide and less deep. And right now, at least my understanding of what staff is proposing is a uniform approach to all lots regardless of depth and width. I, I don't know if that's, is, is there such a thing like that? Would, would that become more own, overly complicated?
Isn't that what we call a variance, then?
Right, but instead of actually having to go through the variance process, there's already an established standard that people can point to and say, okay, well, if my lot falls under these specific circumstances, then, I don't know, the old rules can apply or?
Right. I, I think that would be much easier to, to-
But where is that going to be? Who, who of us has that ability to set that, that figure?
Yeah, well, that's, that's the question-
Are you comfortable with saying?
No, that's the question for staff, because they're, they're approaching it from a uniform perspective, because it's, I can understand, it's easier to interpret, easier to understand. But is there a possibility to have a standard that applies to unusual lots that doesn't require variance?
We could look at an option like that. For instance, what we've said in the code regarding building height is if your lot is unusually wide, more than seventy-five feet, you would have one standard for height. If it's below that, then you could have a different standard for height. So, we could look at what are the standards that need to have some different number based on the, some lot width or lot depth, the ratio of lot width to lot depth. It's a possibility.
It's, okay. I, I'm less familiar with, with that.
I mean, yeah, using that analogy would be if your lot width is below, let's say, eighty feet, then this twenty-five foot doesn't apply to you. Then your, your front yard remains as twenty feet.
Well, it never makes sense if we can come up with that figure.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think you asked, Madam, yes, who decides it? Well, it's, I mean, this forum would decide what that is.
I, I did want to mention that the, the, the new minor exception permit is, would provide some additional flexibility as well without going through an entire variance process and a public hearing. It would allow for up to fifteen percent reduction in the front yard setback for, for these cases.
Fifteen percent is of, of twenty-five feet?
That's about four?
Four feet.
Four feet or so.
Three to four feet.
Um, I, if I may, I, Mr. Reamers in this presentation has some additional diagrams, but I, to, to address the point that was made about flexibility for different lots, I think our, our perspective is that the, the point-two-five FAR in the front forty feet that we're looking at is a better way to address different shapes and sizes of lots, because by, with, with the plane like this, you're measuring it from the front property line. So, it doesn't matter if your lot is shallow or deep, you're still getting that same angle from your front property line. Whereas with the point-two-five FAR that we're looking at, we think that gives some more flexibility, because it's based on the front forty feet of the lot. So, if you have a wider lot, you're going to get more square footage out of that point-two-five, whereas if you have a narrower lot, you're going to get less square footage, because you're just taking your front area and multiplying it by point-two-five. So, I think the, the diagrams will, will explain it better than I am explaining it, but I think our, our perspective is that that will give you that additional flexibility. It's, it's really hard for, for us to try and come up with something that addresses every single possible situation in the city, because there is such a wide variety of lots. So, we're, we're trying to find something that, that maybe is a little bit better, we think, than what we have now. Is it going to be the magic bullet that addresses every situation? Probably not. But that's what the minor exceptions and the variances are for when you get to those, those situations.
So, in trying to deal with this issue of compatibility that we heard from the community and the desire to have two-story houses, what we did is we looked at some communities and in this community to find instances where people did a two-story house and how did they deal with compatibility at that time. And so, we found some examples here where you can see the houses generally made in an L shape with some sort of a courtyard or patio, where the mass of the second floor is pushed to the back, and then there's a small one-story piece that's placed in the front. We found this in different styles of architecture as well, both in kind of a neo-colonial ranch style and also in an English Tudor style. You see these L-shaped pieces that help bring the mass down as it approaches the street. Again, some Spanish examples is where you see it often. So, here's some, this is based on the code that we're proposing tonight. This area in the orange is the forty-foot area. The area in yellow is the required front yard setback. So, the maximum requirement on this lot being fifty feet wide would be five hundred square feet. So, the first, this is a one-story structure that comes up to the front setback line. In this example, you have a one-story structure in the front that takes up the full width of the, of the building, so it has to be a little bit further back from the front setback line. In this example, you have a garage that's up front. In this example, you have a two-story element that's up front. This would not be allowed under the encroachment plane. You can kind of see one of the, there's a line running through the building at an angle. That second-story element wouldn't be allowed under the existing code and under the encroachment plane. So, all of these would be examples that would meet the code.
But it would under the new proposed plan?
Yeah. I'm sorry?
It would be under the new proposed plan, I think.
Uh, under, this would be allowed under the present, I'm, I'm sorry, under the proposed code.
Yeah.
But it would not be allowed under the existing code.
Correct. Ms. Reamer, I thought your front yard setback has to be twenty-five feet.
Because the garage is in the rear, this would, this would be setback twenty feet.
It would get the five foot-
It gets the incentive.
There's a five-foot reduction in the setback.
Reduction. That's a big driveway.
So, the, one of the questions was about why we chose a point-two-five FAR. If you have a structure at a, built up to the front setback line in the forty-feet area, the FAR of that would be a point-three-five FAR. So, we're proposing a point-two-five FAR to help reduce the mass of that structure a little bit. It still would allow for a garage in the front if that was the desire of the applicant. So, that's what I have in regards to the conversation on the front lot FAR. I also have some slides in regards to lot coverage, if you want to move on to that subject.
Do you mind going back to the two-floor planes? I didn't get a chance to read.
Sure.
No, not this one, the slide twenty-three, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So, if the house was built to the maximum setback, the floor area ratio in the front of the lot would be point-three-five. So, a one-story element would be seven hundred square feet. What we're proposing is to reduce that to point-two-five, which would give you a, a building that's five hundred square feet in the front forty feet.
But that's only if they have a garage in the back.
Yes. Well, yeah.
So, would, would this essentially, I'm just trying to picture what these houses would look like. So, essentially, all new two-story houses would have this one-story mass in the front.
Well, they don't have to, they don't want to.
Or nothing.
That allows them to do it.
Or nothing, yeah. So, this would be, yeah, for all, all new houses would have to keep the mass, only the mass of the structure in the front forty feet would be limited to point-two-five. So, you would have, for instance, you could have a one-story element that takes up this portion in this diagram, or it could be, it could be set like this, or it could even be a two-story element that's in the front forty feet. But it could only take up a smaller portion of the front yard.
Okay.
Or, I should say, the front lot. Yeah. If you wanted, basically, if you want to do a two-story element, you just have to reduce the, the footprint, yeah, but, but you, by pushing it back, usually.
Because the FAR would consider both the first story and the second story within that front forty foot.
Exactly.
Okay.
I have a question. One of the earlier slides you showed, like, I believe it was ten different variations, and you said that doing this, you would hope to reduce that number, okay? But you still could get ten different variations.
Oh, in, in this, in this design, well, the, the variations were about the ambiguity in the code. There were so many different, it was so ambiguous, we had to come up with different scenarios to explain what was permissible and what was not permissible. This would make it very clear, because you would just have some numerical standard, is it met or is it not met? But it would allow for an infinite different type of designs based on the architectural style.
Any other questions, Vince, about this particular one?
No, you can move on.
Okay.
So, there were also some questions about lot coverage, so I'll go over that. The, I have a series of graphs. Lot coverage, just to remind you, is just the amount of roof that covers a lot, so the percentage of a lot that's covered by roofs. Along the horizontal axis is diff, lots of different sizes, ranging from five thousand to fifteen thousand square feet. And then on your vertical axis is the maximum lot coverage. So, for instance, on the left-hand side, you have a five thousand square foot lot, so you could cover fifty percent of that, or twenty-five hundred square feet, with roofs. On a fifteen thousand square foot lot, you could cover seven thousand five hundred square feet with roofed structures.
For a single-story building? If you're building a single-story, right?
Whether it's single-story or two-stories, you just calculate all the roofs and that's, that's lot coverage.
But I thought for, currently, the code says if you build two-story, you're limited to FAR thirty-five percent.
That's correct.
So-
FAR does not apply to two, to, to one-story houses.
This is just one-story.
So, this is single-story?
This is most, yeah, it's single-story.
And roofs include garages and patios?
Yes, anything with a fully enclosed roof, so not pergolas, yeah.
Porches count?
A porch counts to lot coverage, but not floor area ratio if it's in the front yard. I should say, in the front of the house. So, this is the existing graph. This is how it looks now, fifty percent, no matter the lot size. Staff is propose, had originally proposed to reduce that and break it into tiers. So, if your lot was between five to seven thousand square feet, you had fifty percent coverage. If it was between seven thousand and ten thousand, you had forty-five percent coverage. And then if it was between ten thousand and fifteen thousand square feet, you were allowed thirty-five percent coverage. So, that was the original proposal we brought to the planning commission. There was a member of the public who took issue with this idea and didn't like that, for instance, at ninety-five hundred square feet, you would be allowed a structure more than four thousand square feet, but at ten thousand, you could only have a structure that was thirty-five hundred. So, they didn't like that severe drop-off between those different tiers, those areas that are shown here in the yellow circles. So, the count, the planning commission recommended that we basically just smooth the line out. So, we came up with a formula for the slope of a line from five thousand to fifteen thousand, and that's the formula we're proposing in the code. So, what that looks like is at five thousand square feet, you're allowed to have fifty percent coverage, and as the size of the lot increases up to fifteen thousand square feet, you're allowed a thirty-five percent lot coverage.
So, it could be forty-two percent?
Exactly.
And that'll be determined, once you determine the lot size and-
Yeah, once you give us the lot size, then we, we, we can provide them with the formula for lot coverage.
Oh, no, exactly.
Yeah.
And this coverage would include accessory dwelling units?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything with a roof, a fully enclosed roof.
And what was this before, before it went to the planning commission?
Before it went to planning commission, it was fifty percent lot coverage, no matter the size of the lot.
And, and the rationale is to prevent the mansionization of our lots, basically?
Yes, yeah. One of the issues, we've seen applications for houses that come in on a very large lot, and they start to get very strange with the number of bedrooms being proposed, or multiple living rooms and dining rooms, and then you start to wonder, is this going to be subdivided or is this some sort of other institutional use, so? So, that, that was an issue that I have. So, I have, the front yard mass was an issue that came up, lot coverage, that was an issue that came up. I don't have any slides on the issue, the maximum height, which was brought up, and I don't have any slides on the question about lot width, fifty feet versus sixty feet, and whether, which is appropriate from the council's perspective.
What was the issue regarding the maximum height, yeah, you brought up and you-
Well, staff was proposing for wide a lot, that you go taller.
And you didn't want to go taller?
No. Well, because, I mean, I thought goes, I mean, staff was, was very careful and appreciate what they're trying to do, is reduce the massing of what, what, what the new, of the new homes that we're, we're proposing. And some of that I agree and some of that I don't agree, but, but I think if the intent was to reduce the mass and increasing height, it's going backwards, in my mind.
So, rather than go outer, it's go, it's increasing by going up.
Yeah.
You're still getting the increase, but the increase is, what, two feet?
Two feet.
On lots less than seventy-five feet, it's two feet. On lots greater than seventy-five feet, it's from twenty-six to thirty-two.
So, it could be up to sixty?
Yeah, increase by sixty.
Since we don't have any slides, I want to illustrate really quickly. If you, if you imagine this is, this is the top of a square house, currently, what the code says, it just limits the overall height to twenty-six feet, correct?
Yes.
So, twenty-six feet, so you can build, if you want to build a, a square house with a flat roof, up to that twenty-six feet, you can. So, what we're recommending is that, first of all, we're setting a new limit for the ceiling, that we call it the top plate height, the ceiling height.
That's the inside?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're dropping that down to twenty-three feet. So, from twenty-six down to twenty-three, so your living area can only go up to that twenty-three. But then, where you do your sloped roof, we're allowing a little bit extra. So, we're taking this from twenty-six up to twenty-eight, or if you're on a wide enough lot, you can go up to thirty-two. So, we're bringing the overall bulk down three feet, but then giving back a little bit so that, and what Scott was describing before with the pitch of the roof, the three and twelve and four and twelve, you're generally like in this area. So, with the additional feet that we're, we're proposing to give, you could do a little bit steeper roof, like the picture that he had of the English Tudor, where you see a little bit steeper roof. So, we're bringing this bulk down, but then giving it back by allowing them to go a little bit steeper on the roof if they want to. That's what we're proposing.
And, and the rationale for that is?
The rationale is to allow more flexibility in the architectural style by, instead of, because generally, what, what you're telling people is if you want to do a steeper roof-
You're going to go flat.
You have, yeah, you, well, you either have to go flat, or if you really, really want to do a steeper roof, you have to push everything else down. So, you're looking at maybe eight-foot ceilings instead of nine or ten-foot ceilings. So, we're allowing that flexibility to do a steeper roof, but then the trade-off is we're pulling this down and saying if you want to do a flat roof, you can only go to twenty-three feet, you can't go to twenty-six.
So, most of these would be kind of a wash, because you're bringing it down, but then you're raising it up. So, the, the difference between what we have now and what we have under the new code isn't really that significantly different, is it?
We don't think it's that different now.
Well, I think it does. I think visually, you can see, still see a bigger massing here. However, to, to answer the, at least one question that you have, the, how people do it today with the lower, they have a roof pitch up to a point that they start building a flat roof or a raised. However, to, to answer the, at least one question that you have, the, how people do it today with the lower, they, uh, have a roof pitch up to a point that they start building a flat roof, or a raised. That's how they get away with that.
Yeah, we have seen that on some houses where they really wanna do a pitch, is instead of doing this, they do this, and then they have a flat part in the middle. We have seen that also.
Yeah.
That's what they could do now.
That's what they are forced to do now, if they wanna do the steeper roof, because they, they can't get high enough to do an actual pitch, so they bring it down and do a flat part.
Um, what is, uh, Mr. Ream, what is the current, uh, lot coverage ratio? Fifty percent?
Fifty percent.
Just flat throughout?
Yeah, no matter the lot size.
And the reason to go to this formula is just so that, uh?
We were trying to, um, on the very large lots, reduce lot coverage, so we didn't get proposals for houses that were strangely large, um.
But wouldn't you be already limiting that by your FAR already, if you are?
No, because, uh, in the FAR, it only applies to two-story houses, it doesn't apply to one-story houses.
One-story has no FAR at all?
No, it does not. I- if we applied it, then, then that would take care of the issue.
Well, ba- basically, the lot, lot coverage governs your fifty percent FAR. I mean, it becomes FAR if it's a single-story building.
One way of handling this would be to just limit, um, reply floor area ratio to one and two-story houses, and set the maximum cap at four thousand square feet, that would be an alternative.
Um, I have a question, the one thing that we didn't talk about was the, um, underground parking for R-three. Can you give us a little bit more information on that? I know it was for, to provide more open space, correct?
Right. One, one of the things that, um, we've been looking at in terms of our existing constr- uh, building pattern, is that we get a lot of, um, um, detached, um, single fa- uh, detached multifamily units along a twenty-foot wide, um, uh, driveway. And then the units take their access off that driveway, so the central feature, um, as you're using the site, as you drive by the site, is this harsh twenty-foot driveway. Uh, the, the fire department requires it to be twenty-five feet wide, there's usually very little landscaping, so it comes across as a very harsh environment. Um, so one, what we were proposing to do is instead of having this driveway as a central feature, to have some landscaping and open space as the central feature. In order to reach the maximum density that, um, we're now allow on the R-three zone, in order to reach that and provide all the parking, um, they would likely have to push the parking underground in order to get the maximum unit count. If they don't wanna get the maximum unit count, if they don't wanna get thirty-six dwelling units per acre, they could put the parking at grade. Um, so it, in that way, it's up to them, um, but if we're going to require two parking spaces per unit, um, plus guest parking, uh, and they wanna reach the maximum density, they're gonna have to place all that parking below grade.
And so what happens with the fire department if it's underground?
Uh, we've had a conversation with the fire department, we've showed them our sketches, we've talked to them about what they would want, um, and we've come to an agreement with them that they would be, um, they, they would be okay with this style of, um, development. Um, they would just require, um, that the setbacks have to be, um, five feet at least, and they have to be unobstructed. So we've written that into the code as well. So they don't want, um, walls down the side property line that restrict access, they don't wanna have AC units in the side property line, um, so that sort of stuff.
Okay, so they give around.
So that they, so if they need to service it for an emergency, they can run fire hoses easily down the side property line.
How many, how many projects would you say, you said you'd get a lot of requests, I mean, what's, what's a lot?
Uh, under the present ordinance, or who's interested in the new ordinance?
Who's, um, under the old ordinance?
Under the old ordinance. Under the old ordinance, um, for R-three, we probably get less than a half a dozen R-three projects in a year.
In a year?
Yeah.
And do we currently have any that have underground parking?
No, we don't, um, but we actually have, I've spoken to a designer who's done it, two projects like this in San Gabriel. Um, and he's, has a project that, um, he's on contract to design, um, he already has a copy of our code, and he's starting to prepare the plans for it. So, that's gonna be a fifteen-unit project.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Were those all the issues that you had?
Yeah.
Hi.
Um, if I didn't make it clear, I've issued the twenty-five-feet, uh, front yard setback as well.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-five-foot, front yard setback.
Twenty-five-foot?
Oh, four to.
Front yard setback.
Yeah.
Instead of twenty, right?
Yes.
And where does that apply?
For all R-one.
For all, all buildings, all R-one, unless, people have to, unless you put your garage in the back, then you get your five feet back.
Right.
So, but, yeah, well, I, I, uh, aesthetically, architecturally.
Did, did staff respond to that?
That was part of the presentation that Mr. Reamers was giving.
Yeah.
Cause, uh, just so we understand where everybody's coming from.
So, the reason why I have a bit issue with that is that, um, um, why I liked it to see windows and doors and walls and fenestrations and architectural features instead of looking at garage doors. Um, I think that's a, and encouraging, having a garage in the back actually is a wonderful idea. But yeah, at the same time, the other side of me, which look at sustainability and said, well, you are forced to build a big, long driveway, concrete and to the back, when I could have a much shorter driveway in the front. I have a little, that, that troubles me too, at making everybody park in the back. And then, it's hard to maneuver, if you've, any one of you have driven to the back and parked anybody's houses, it's hard to get around, you have to have a turnaround, and, I don't know, we're also, uh, wanting to, our site to be more sustainable, so, most people would probably just go to twenty-five feet instead of trying to put the garage in, on the side, I guess, but, uh, but then again, it, it conflicts with a shallower lot, so. I, I think we should look at the houses that we've been to, shifting the house back another ten, twenty feet, or at minimum five feet. Uh, is that an issue for, for us? In my mind, it is. I mean, there are a lot of good things that was proposed, but I just brought up the things that I have s- issues with.
Yeah, so if, if I, if I could just also add, I, I have a similar concern, um, but it seems like maybe staff has some, I don't know if you're gonna, is, is it feasible to entertain an idea of, of a, of a different standard, or is that just too complicated? I haven't really heard a, heard a response on, on that, or is, is sort of the standard practice to just have variances take care of all those, which, I guess I heard Mr. Murphy bring up earlier. I think part of maybe why this is a bit more sensitive is because where I used to live is a, is a wide lot that was not deep. So then I, I can visually imagine, like, what that looks like when you have a twenty-five-foot setback from the front, as well as the fifteen-foot setback from the rear. Like, literally, that takes away so much of that available space, that you wouldn't even be able to put your garage in the back, cause there is no back.
Right.
Your, your lot is, is not that, not that deep anyway, so, so I think it, it makes, I understand it makes a lot of sense for a standard lot waste, but I just feel like, wh- if we're trying to paint a broad stroke, we should at least consider the, the, I guess, so-called unintended consequences on the lots that don't fall under that category, and how we're gonna deal with it, instead of simply saying that they must seek a variance as part of their standard process. So, so essentially, all, I would say most, if I were to guess, most lots that are more wide than deep are also the lots that tend to be smaller. They're not the lots that are, you know, ten thousand, fifteen thousand square feet, we're talking like sixty-five hundred square feet or less. And so, while a lot of these incentives sound great on paper, but it seems that mathematically, they won't be able to take advantage of those incentives. So they, they get sort of like double punished, in a way. So, I, I just feel like if, un- unless there was like specific examples that show how the new proposed ordinance would affect those specific lots, and, and to show that that effect was minimal, I guess I, at least on paper, when I try to draw it out myself, I, I, I have a hard time seeing the, the non-impact, I guess.
But doesn't the, uh, the exceptions that the code, the, the proposed code, isn't that, aren't those exceptions more or less put in there to deal with those type of issues? Uh, because, if I'm reading this correctly, it can go anywhere from, a minor exception is, uh, development standards is anywhere from between ten and fifteen percent. So, I mean, even if you have a forty-foot lot or fifty-foot, that's, that's giving back that five feet right up, right up, or the ability to give that five feet back right away, without having to go through the variance, uh, procedure, so, it, that, that ability to adapt to those unique lots, I believe, is provided for in the proposed changes, that's, that's how I see it, so. I think the, you know, the, the fact that, you know, while it's this way or not, it, it really isn't, it's not, you know, there is some discretionary, there is some exceptions that apply, and, uh, if, if that doesn't work, yeah, then they have to go to a variance, but variance has been around forever. And, uh, and, you know, to develop, uh, a, a set, a set of rules for every type of lot we have in the city would, I think, be next to impossible, but, I hear what you're saying, well, maybe we can come up with a couple of different standards or something like that. But like I said, even if we did that, I think the exception language covers that situation already, so.
Uh, I think what was really helpful for me was those drawing, those examples that you had, shit, the three-D renderings, and then that, kind of instantly, we can all visualize what exactly that code means for a certain lot configuration. At least for me, I think it would be helpful to see that example apply to a, a lot that was more wide than deep. And then, then you can kind of physically see what, you compare the current standards that they would have to build versus the proposed changes, and wa- is that really truly restrictive, or are we just, I mean, to give staff the benefit of the doubt, am I imagining things that, like, maybe Mayor Protemis is correct, maybe, no, I, I, I can't do the three-D rendering on, on paper, so, um, that, that's sort of the question I, I'm, I'm asking. Like, before we go forward and say, let's adopt this entire thing as it is, there's certain nuanced areas, but maybe we can better understand what that, what that truly means.
There, there may be a potential solution here, in that, in the minor exception process, there is a table that per- sets, um, what percentage of a setback can be reduced. So in the front yard, um, can be reduced up to fifteen percent. If it's the desire of the council to allow someone on a lot that's wider than it is deep, um, we could add language to that table that says, in these instances, a setback can be, a front yard setback could be reduced down to twenty feet, um, if it meets those findings. So, uh, there may be an easy solution, rather than setting up a whole different set of standards, um, than doing.
That might be one way to do it, but I think, in my mind, the zoning code, uh, should offer a s- a rather standard answers to, in my mind, rather common situations. Uh, having a wide lot is not that uncommon, I mean, that, um, I haven't looked at many lots before, wide lots is not that uncommon, wide and shallow lots are not that uncommon at all, and for.
In Temple City or just in general?
In Temple City, in Temple City.
See, now, I would have a different view, when I drive around Temple City, I rarely see, at least in my mind, wide lots. When I see a wide lot, I say, wow, that's, that's something unusual.
Not so much wide, it's shallow lot.
Okay, well, that's a different, you said, you said what?
Wide and shallow, well, well, wide mean.
So you mean, you mean, uh, length?
Yeah, shallow lot, yeah, shallow lot, yeah.
Not width.
Um, it's not that uncommon at all, and in my mind, for the code, i- it's only in red, those rare cases, we should go for, even for minor deviations, because a designer or a ho- homeowner, they don't necessarily come to you immediately with an architectural design, they have to design it first. So what do they design it at before they have something to show you? I, I think that is my, my question, cause if it's by, it should be by right, you should be able to attain certain, certain sizes, certain development, and then they take the, they take it to you, and then you, you can say, well, I agree or I disagree, or, oh, this is just short of a little bit. But I think for variations up to from twenty-five feet to twenty, that's a huge deal, in, in a, at least, if I were to put a designer hat on. That impacts how I design that house, and, um, and I need to design something before I can take, go to you to, to add, well, is that discretion or not discretion?
But doesn't the designer first look at the law before they design?
They do.
Or they look the other way?
No.
I mean, you don't just design a house with.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's a re- exactly my point, they have to look at the law and decipher, this is why I can't build. But if the law says, well, there's a fifteen percent, you need to ask for discretion, then I wouldn't know what to do with that fifteen percent. I would have to.
Sure, they, they're gonna design it and go for the fifteen percent.
Well, but you, but because it's, that says discretion, you may or may not get it, there's no guarantee you're gonna get it. So we need to, in my mind, need to afford some predictability for the designer to work with.
If I may, there's, there's two different pieces to the garage incentive, and it seems like a lot of the consternation is on the twenty versus twenty-five feet on the front setback. The other piece of the garage incentive is the square footage bonus, so if the council needs more information and isn't comfortable tonight on the setback, another alternative would be to, you leave the garage incentive in as it is, but only as it pertains to square footage. Um, and then we'll just leave the twenty-foot front setback as it is for now, take out that twenty-five-foot incentive related to the garage, um, and then we can just bring all of that back to you and the planning commission at a later time, and as, as Councilmember Mann said, with some more diagrams and more things to show how it would apply, we can come back with some information on how many lots in the city we're actually talking about that this would affect. Um, so we can just, just leave the front setback at twenty feet as it is now, take that incentive as it pertains to the garage out, um, and then we can bring that back to you at another time, if, if, the, another option for you to consider.
And then with that too, uh, so that would, again, kind of what we talked about earlier, kind of pull that out, but I, at least, I didn't hear any. I, I heard some questions about the R-two and the R-three and the commercial, but if, if those are okay, then we would adopt those and then pull those specific, uh, those R-one sections out. But if there's any, I, but I haven't heard any, but maybe we're still, still going in the discussion.
Want me to l- read the list of issues I have? I mean, I do have a list here.
Oh, no, I, uh, on which one, sir?
Uh, I think the ones I've been questioning was the twenty-five percent, uh, twenty-five percent FAR in the front, forty feet. I, I have issue with increasing the height, I don't, I have issue with reducing the size of the lot width from sixty feet to fifty feet. And I'm not sure, even though I, I appreciate what staff have brought up, the R-two, R-three, uh, modification, making it, you must go to a underground, uh, parking, because I'm concerned by affordability in the, in, in the city. And finally, the other issue I have was the twenty-five-foot, uh, front yard setback.
Sir, just to be clear, I, I don't believe that you have to go underground, I believe that, uh, what Mr. Reamers was saying was that to get the maximum number of units per acre, it would require underground parking. If you had, say, an extraordinarily wide lot, you could still build a fairly lo- not extraordinarily, if you had, say, two R-three lots that you were able to combine into one project, you could keep street-level parking, and under some of our new laws like SB thirty-five, um, uh, or the, the new Housing Accountability Act, uh, there are some options for only having one parking space per unit if the units are affordable, which would then certainly let you stay at street-level parking. Uh, the undergrounding is simply, um, when the general plan was updated, and we are looking to meet our RENA numbers by upzoning these, uh, R-three lots uh, to account for the number of units we have to account for, uh, in order to get all of those units on the lot, you'd have to go underground.
Right.
Um, but if you're willing to do fewer units, then you can stay at street-level parking. Mr. Reamers, is that?
That's correct, thank you.
Well, I'd like to see then how many, in a typical s- development, what was that really mean? But I hate to ra- raise the number of units and then in, in that, and that's enforcing underground. So, I'm not sure about how I, how I feel about that, uh, yet.
Is there any other? How about on the commercial side?
I'm okay with that.
Mayor, Mayor Fish can, I have a few comments on the commercial side. Um, i- is it correct to say that the downtown speci-, do you mention the downtown specific plan ordinances were basically absorbed into the current version of the code?
Yes.
And so, if I understand, the downtown specific plan was created in the early two thousand. And so, essentially, staff's professional opinion is that there does not need to be any significant changes to the downtown specific plan. Okay. So, uh, one thing I do want to bring up, and I believe I've talked to staff about this before, is regarding one specific area of our window signs ordinance in the downtown specific plan. And mainly, this has come to issue because of several businesses in, on Las Tunas that have, um, sort of, I don't want to say they complained about the issue, but they mentioned that, uh, they were cited for one of these, specifically, I'm talking about the, um, in section nine dash one F dash twelve, Table J, uh, our ordinance basically says window signage cannot exceed twenty-five percent of the window area. Um, and so, recently, we had two stores that, um, recently opened and they were cited for that. One was the, I mean, we, staff knows it, so it's, it's public information. One was the Hello Kitty dental office. Uh, the second is the German piano store on the corner of Las Tunas and Temple City Boulevard. If I understand, the, the point of the ordinance was to make it so that you can see inside the store, so it doesn't feel like everything's blocked off and it's like a mystery store. Um, and it's to promote sort of like this downtown-centric, pedestrian-friendly, more welcoming environment. Uh, so, I, I guess I had an issue with it because in, in some of those specific cases, while they did technically exceed the twenty-five percent area, um, like, if we take the piano store, for example, they weren't obstructing the view into the store. So, to me, it felt like there was this arbitrary number that wa- that was decided that they can't exceed it. And I can understand in, say, like, bad cases where you have just crummy or random advertising just plastered over the windows, we would have an issue with that. So, to me, it seems like the, the issue is more site-specific to different businesses and different cases. Um, I think businesses are trying to look for creative ways to make use of their, their store areas and their frontages. Um, another example I did bring up to staff is, if you look at a lot, the, uh, number of photo studios along Las Tunas, they essentially have a display case that stretches from floor to ceiling, and yet we're okay with that. You can't see into the stores from, from that. Um, I don't know if those would be, fall under the, the window sign ordinance. So, uh, I guess what I'm trying to bring up is, I, I'm not saying I have the answer. I'm saying that it seems like that's probably gonna be more and more of an issue, um, if we don't. I guess I'm, I'm looking for, for staff to maybe see if there's a, I don't know if this is a matter of rewriting the ordinance, or is it a matter of simply how we enforce it? Right? I, I'm, I'm trying to not sort of mix the two together, or maybe they are sort of in- inevitably related to each other. Um, I feel like if we're trying to foster a business-friendly environment, um, we might want to look beyond simply the black and white of the ordinance, this twenty-five percent area, which seems like it could easily be passed. So, I, I would ask council to consider perhaps asking staff to relook at that, that specific section.
So, wha- what are we doing here tonight? Are we, are we adopting something? Are we just carving it apart and we're asking people to, to come back? I, I'm kind of lost. Where, where are we?
I, I think the desire tonight is if, it sounds like the council is okay with about ninety-nine percent of the code.
Well, I don't know that I would go to ninety-nine percent, but-
Well, it is three inches thick. Um, there's, there's a few items that are still hanging out there, let's say, half a dozen to a dozen items that the council still wants to review some more. Um, in those cases, we-
I don't know that council wants to review it. We've heard from two council members that want to review it, and we haven't even had a vote yet. Frankly, I'm ready to, to propose, to propose the adoption as, as proposed, but, uh, you know, I don't know how that's gonna be voted upon, but that's why I'm trying to figure out where are we at here? Are we, are we doing this tonight? Are we bringing it back? Are we gonna adopt some and not adopt others? And what, what portions are we not gonna adopt? Has anybody identified those? I know Vince has a list, but I don't exactly agree with his list.
Yeah, I, our, our, our hope and recommendation this evening is that we walk out of here with an ordinance, uh, first reading of an ordinance. Um, everything except whatever pieces the council is not comfortable moving forward with tonight. So, I think we've, um, I think we've laid out the particular issues that, that different council members want to talk about. So, if the council is okay with it, I think our recommendation would be that you tackle each of those items and decide as a council if you're comfortable making a decision on those tonight, or if you would like to carve those out and have us bring those back at another time. Um, I think the, the issue that Councilmember Mann brought up regarding the window signage, that would be a change to the existing code, um, and it is not something that has been brought up during this process. So, that, I think, is something that staff would recommend. We bring that back as a separate discussion, um, rather than trying to change it tonight, just because that would be a change to the existing code. Um, so that piece, I would, we would recommend that we bring that back as a separate item.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay with that.
The, um, the other pieces, uh, the, the single-family, um, I think it's, for the single-family, I think the, the issues that Councilmember U has brought up, we can probably carve around those without too much difficulty. Uh, the multifamily issue is a bigger concern, just because if, if the concern is the, the proposal to encourage underground parking, that's kind of a complete rewrite of the multifamily standards as, as we propose them. So, that's a bigger, bigger issue if the council is not comfortable doing that tonight. But the single-family ones, I, I think our recommendation would be if you can, if you're comfortable addressing those just one by one and saying, okay, we're gonna go with what staff is proposing tonight, or we're gonna keep the code as it is now and ask staff to bring that back as a separate piece later. Okay, does that make sense? And, and we, we have the, the, I mean, I think the, the items, the, the council member you mentioned, number one is the, the forty percent plain versus the FAR, so that's one issue. Uh, one issue is the height limit, twenty-three versus twenty-six versus twenty-eight. Uh, one issue is the front setback, the twenty versus twenty-five. Um, and then, as that pertains also to the incentives with the garage, um, I, were there any, I think those were the-
Was that, um, fifty feet, uh, minimum lot width versus sixty feet?
Uh, the minimum lot width.
Yeah, so we're trying to make it standard, but I'm suggesting we standardize up instead of standardize down.
Yeah, mo- most of those, I think, if, I think it's, and we can, and we can help guide that discussion too, but I think those are fairly, well, I'm gonna say easy, but, uh, fairly straightforward, I'll say, to, to tackle.
Michael, why was the recommendation fifty versus, or sixty, fifty versus sixty? Are most lots fifty in our city, the average lot?
I believe so. Most of our lots are fifty. And, and what the, what the code says is that if you, if you have a one-hundred-foot lot and you want to split it into two fifty-foot lots, you can, but if you have a bigger piece of property that you want to carve up, then your lots have to be sixty feet. So, we, so our question was, well, why are we requiring fifty in one case and sixty in another case? Um, it also came up with the flag lots, um, because we require, if you're gonna do a flag lot, the front lot had to be sixty feet, and that was an issue that we had discussed earlier with the planning commission as well. And we said, we said, and the planning commission said, well, if I can do a regular lot split and do fifty-fifty, why do I then have to do sixty if I want to do a flag lot? Let's just make everything fifty. So, that was our perspective. If the, if the easier perspective or, and what Councilmember U is suggesting is just make everything sixty, I, I, staff doesn't have an objection to that, that's fine too. That's just, what, what that will do is now for people who have one-hundred-foot wide lots, they will no longer be able to split those into two fifty-foot lots. You would have to have a hundred and twenty feet and split it into two sixty-foot lots.
I don't like penalizing people that have a smaller lot to not be able, if they have a hundred foot, they can't split it to, it, they, right?
That was, that was our perspective, yes.
Yeah, so, I, I, I don't agree with that, Vincent.
I think fifty-foot lot's awfully narrow.
Mine's forty-foot and I'm happy.
But, but yours is unusually, but that's unusual.
The one next door's forty-two, but-
The, of course, it's a different time. Uh, we did discuss it before, um, as, way back when, when we talked about, when we purposely make that sixty feet, we, we did discuss it before, and the consensus back then was, we really don't want to see tiny little lots.
But if the average is fifty-foot in our city?
No, we're not, I don't know about average of fifty. I, I think average wide and that.
That doesn't seem very big.
Okay, so the proposal is to-
Average is not good.
Adopt what we can and then carve out some of these things that have been brought up. And then what happens? You guys do some further research and bring it back, and we discuss it some more, and then add it to the, add it back into the regulations at some future time?
Yes, any, anything that we bring back to you, what you adopt tonight would just be the current code. So, anything that's questionable tonight, we would just take whatever the current code says and stick that in, and that's what you would adopt tonight. So, those pieces would not be changed. You'd just be carrying forward what's in the code now.
Can we change those later?
Yes, and then we would bring that back through the planning commission to you.
Okay, but that wouldn't be effective sixty days from now. We would have to go through the whole process again.
Those would take, yes, that would be later.
So, and, and I, I see two ways to do that.
Thank you.
Um, because it does look like we're okay with everything outside of residential, you could say in section four of the ordinance, uh, that the code is amended and restated as set forth in Exhibit One, except as to chapter nine dash one G, which shall remain as currently written. That would get all of residential out of what's being updated and keep the R three issues and the R one issues before you. You could also say, with the exception of sections nine dash one G dash ten through nine dash one G dash fifteen, which shall remain as currently written. That would allow the R three issue to go forward and would only accept R one from what's being updated. The vast majority of what's been talked about tonight is R one, so if there's enough comfort level with the changes to the R three situation, then you can go that route. Either one of those would allow almost everything to go forward except for what's been the focus of your discussion. And then, if you go that way, we can talk about direction for how you want things brought back.
Okay, I will entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to do what Greg said.
Which one? There's two. You gave us two choices.
The last, last one with all the dashes.
Okay, so, then, then what you would say is, um, oh, heck, I'll just make it. Uh, the motion would be to adopt an addendum to the Temple City mid-century general, general plan update and crossroads specific plan environmental impact report, indicating that there are no substantial changes or impacts that have not been addressed by the EIR that would require further environmental review. Introduce for first reading by title only and waive further reading of ordinance number nineteen dash one oh three six as amended, which adopts and amended and restated zoning code, adopts a new zoning map, and repeals the downtown specific plan, and schedule the second reading of ordinance number nineteen dash one oh three six for August twentieth, two thousand nineteen, with the amendment to the ordinance being in section four, with the following language added to the end of that section. Code is amended and restated as set forth in Exhibit One, with the exception of sections nine dash one G dash ten through nine jet, dash, one G dash fifteen, which shall remain as currently written. I believe that does it. Mr. Forbes?
Um, actually, it, it, it does not, actually. With all due respect to Mr. Murphy, we were convening over here, and because we've, the entire structure of the code has been redone, all the numbering has been changed, all the cross-references have been changed. So, to just carve out those two pieces and adopt the rest of it is going to just make a big mess of everything. So, I think if, if the council is not comfortable moving forward with this residential at all tonight, um, I think our recommendation unfortunately is gonna have to be that we bring the whole thing back at another time, because we, it's not, it's been completely restructured and you can't, legally, you can, we, we're not gonna be able to practically carve out pieces like that.
I, I defer to him. I, I-
Can I make a motion to approve it as you've done it? And see where it goes?
So, ma- may I ask a question? So, if, if that's-
Because I, I think there's people that are dependent on-
Yeah, let's, so let's get my-
Us doing something tonight.
So, my question is, if, if we adopt it as it is, are, is this, is the issue related to the R ones going to be brought back for later discussion?
We, you could certainly, if you wanted to, you could certainly say, we're gonna adopt it as it is and see how it goes. But staff, we want you back here in six months or whatever it is, and we want you to tell us on these particular issues, how is it going? Have, and we can tell you, have we seen applications? Have we gotten complaints from people that it's not working? Bring you, hopefully, we'll have some real-world examples we can show you to see what's working and what's not. And, and the municipal codes and zoning codes in particular are living, breathing documents. You know, we've, over the past year, we've brought in a couple of the series one and series two code amendments to you for some cleanup stuff, and we fully expect that we'll be back before you with some cleanup stuff in the coming year, because there's always something that we find. Um, so we can certainly, any issues that you would like to direct us to bring back for further discussion and let you know how it's working, we can absolutely do that.
So, can I amend that motion to include bringing that back in six months?
For all, the issues that have been brought up this evening, we will bring back reports in six months to let you know what's working and what isn't.
So, basically, what, that would mean, we, it gets adopted as is proposed now, but it could be potentially changed in the future based on what you're saying?
I, I don't know why the rush is, though. I mean, we took fifty years to get to today. So, I mean, why are we rushing to get it through? I mean, I raised a number of issues here.
I think you said there's people that are-
But people can use the current code.
I mean, we've, we've been having these discussions for two years with the planning commission and with our applicants and architects, and, so, there are some people who would like to see this go forward.
Some people like to see it go forward, but many architects and designers develop, they know what the current code is. They know how to operate underneath it, uh, using them. Um, I don't know why the rush to go to adoption when we have questions.
There, there is one legal issue. Under the California Planning and Zoning Law, you have two years from the adoption of a, or adoption or major amendment of a general plan to bring your zoning code into conformity with the general plan. So, the major zoning code update is essentially required to be done within that two-year period. There, there's a small bit of flexibility, but it's standard zoning practice to follow that code.
How much time we have left?
Uh, till December, so it, it should be effective in December.
I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, 'cause, yeah, 'cause I'll just do one, one fin- one final thing. 'Cause with respect to this issue being discussed over the course of two years, I would say this is the first time council has actually discussed this in an open session. So, yeah, the planning commission has had all the time and the word to discuss it, but the city council hasn't. We've had this one meeting to really talk about issues, and there's a number of things being brought up.
I've seen this co only the last few days.
Yeah, so, so I, I would, I would dis-
Didn't we all sit down with, uh, the, uh, our director and-
Right, but it wasn't, but it's not, it's not a public-
Get the same presentation?
Not, not this presentation.
That's what I got.
Yeah.
Wow.
Not this level of detail.
Mine was pretty detailed.
Yeah, the presentation we got is the attachment at the end of the document.
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion, Madam Mayor.
I think there's still a motion on the floor.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, there is a motion on the floor.
What was your motion? Can you repeat it, please?
My motion was to approve it as this, as it is, and bring it back in six months to see what issues were raised by the developers, the residents, and so forth. Okay.
Including the addendum to the EIR and schedule exactly the same.
Did you, I mean, it can go nowhere, but at least we can vote.
Is that your motion?
That's the motion.
Can I second it?
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
No.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember U?
No.
Mayor Protem-
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
No.
Okay, so, uh, with that motion defeated, uh, what we'll have to do is staff has come back, we will take what these comments are and come back to you, uh, they'll have, the staff will have to go back to the planning commission as well with that, um, and we'll, we'll, uh.
Well, shouldn't there be another motion? I mean, this is a decision by the council, not by you, so maybe with the one, the ones who voted no should perhaps bring another motion.
So wa- was the other suggestion to.
Bring back the whole thing.
Only exclude the residential portion, is that what I heard, cause?
No.
He said we couldn't, right?
Well, first of all, I think Mayor Protem was ready to make a motion, so.
Oh, he was.
Well, it was the same motion.
Yeah, the same.
I believe Michael said that it would be better to bring the entire thing back than to piece it.
Oh, okay.
So perhaps a motion to allow staff to bring it back, uh, if. If Director Forbes, while he's talking.
Um, with regard to the, at least with regard to the single family, the R one, we can do what Mr. Murphy said earlier, just in a little bit different way, rather than carving out the entire section, we can take your direction tonight that for the issues that have been raised, keep the code the way it is. So you'll still, it'll still be in the new, in the format of the new code, but we're gonna go back and replace the numbers and requirements to be what the code is now. And we will do that for you for second reading and bring that back. For the multifamily, um, I think we, we probably need a little bit more direction from council. If you would, if you would like us to just completely exclude the multifamily also, we'll, I'll just say that we'll figure out a way to do that because we would, we, whether or not we go forward with the residential, we would really like to get a new code in place. So if we need to carve out the residential to save that action tonight, then we'll just, we'll do what we need to do between now and second reading to make that happen.
Madam Mayor, I, you know, it's not like I have issue of the, uh, R two, R three. It's just that I haven't been able to totally convince myself which way I should, I should vote on it. It's just that, um, it really, time is very short and unfortunately for me, I only saw this only for a few days. I didn't have my staff meeting, maybe the time that you, you got, you all had. I only had this for a few days, I haven't had chance to read, digest through it. And, um, if we were to, my, I don't see the rush to adopt it tonight, uh, personally, but if we were gonna adopt it, I would like to see this portion being excluded as well to give at least a little bit, give myself and perhaps others a little bit more time to think, think it through.
Okay, do you wanna put that in a motion?
Yes.
Before, before you do a motion, I just wanna make sure I understand, so, to me, it would, um, to me it would make more sense, rather than do this piecemeal, is to, uh, and again, I respect your, uh, request that you wouldn't want some more time to digest and look at it. That it may actually, um, have you come to some conclusion on some of these things.
Right, yeah.
Either the same or different, who knows, whatever it may be.
Right.
But certainly I have no problem with that, but, uh, my suggestion would be if, if that, if that's the inclination and that's gonna be a potential motion, rather than piecemeal it, I, I would rather do all of this at once since, as you say, there's, there is no rush, as long as we get it done before December, I think I heard, or? Okay, um, I think it would be, to me it would be kind of confusing and I think even to staff, okay, what do we do, what do we did not do? Now what do we have to go back and change? Why don't we just continue this to allow staff to address some of the issues that were brought up tonight and then bring it back to us at a future time, right? Uh, Greg, I don't think that's, that's a problem, is it, uh, as far as continuing this thing?
You can certainly continue it, I would, I would really urge us to have it adopted by November so that it's effective in December in accordance with the law.
Well, yeah, and I think we can do it actually before then, it depends on how quick staff can come back to it, but, I mean, this is only July.
Can I, I just want some clarity, I'm not sure, uh, Mayor Fish, if you can just share like what your concerns are, maybe I should be more concerned, cause only real concerns I've heard are from Vincent.
Well, then there was an item, but, but William's item was actually a matter that's really not before, it was more of a change.
But Williams was more general.
Yeah, but I also had some similar concerns, maybe for different reasons than councilmember Yu on some of the R one stuff.
But they were the same, the same.
Yeah, my, mine was more for, for clarity, I just felt like this being the first go around that we're discussing. Like I re, like I said, I'll say again, I, I really liked those renderings that you guys did, that, that really brought home to me what the changes physically meant. So I think some of the other questions related to some of the issues that were brought up could possibly be addressed perhaps in a similar manner. Of course, I'll defer to staff as to how they believe is the best way to illustrate or answer some of those concerns. So that's why I felt like this one meeting, I felt like was the first step towards, you know, who knows, maybe after the next meeting, we all end up agreeing with, with staff's recommendation, but I think it's that lack of clarity right now for, for, I'm speaking for myself that I'm asking for.
Most of my issues were with the R one, um, initially I was a little concerned with the underground parking, but, you know, once we made it clear that that's only going to be if they use the maximum, which may not be that many times. I, I was under the impression it was that we were going to ha- have them always have underground parking, which, underground parking is expensive. And we've never had it, and I don't know if that would just defer people from doing anything. Um, it's, it's millions of dollars, um, and that's all, you know, t- what is it, thirty-six? Did you say it's?
Units per acre.
How many?
Thirty-six units per acre is the maximum.
Thirty, yeah, I, you know, so that's not really my concern anymore, more my concern was to, was with the residential. And we did meet individually, I mean, most of us did, but I really do wanna hear what my colleagues have to say. And this is the only, the very first time we've ever discussed it in an open meeting, and it hasn't been done since the nineteen sixties.
Yeah.
So, um, I just don't feel comfortable voting on something that I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with, but yet again, I want to hear from my other colleagues and, you know, even if we had it at just one more, one more meeting, I just think we need ti- a little bit more time, I need a little bit more time just to go over all of these.
My only concern is, well, besides people that are wanting to do this, is that sometimes it's not till something is in place that you know whether or not it's working. So the option to approve it and make it simple for everyone and then
That's true.
Come back and say we do it three months, I don't know what you're comfortable with or, but six months. I mean, then you have some actual feedback from the people that are willing to invest in this community and do it, whether it's single family or multifamily. I mean, we're making an assumption that people aren't gonna be comfortable with this, but how are we gonna know? I mean, to me, the best.
Well, and I don't disagree with you, but unfortunately you and I were on the minority end of that argument.
Yeah, we were, so that's okay.
So, um, so I would, Madam Mayor, if, if I made, I, I would propose a, and, and again, I would analogize this, I hate to always go back to legal stuff, but you guys go to the engineering stuff, but sometimes when judges don't have enough information, they ask for further briefing and they ask for further information. And you know what they need, they need a continuance, so I think that's what we need here. Uh, so I would propose, I would make a motion that we continue this matter to the August twentieth, um, meeting,
I'm good with that.
Uh, and for further discussion and direct council to, um, address the issues that were raised tonight and be prepared, uh, to offer, uh, discussion and talking points on those issues. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Can I get a roll call please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Thank you.
Just for clarity, sir, you did mean to direct staff to come back? I, I believe you said direct council.
Oh, I'm talking like a lawyer.
Yes, sir.
I thought I was a judge for a minute, I think they knew, Peggy's got it right anyway.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine, unfinished business nun, new business nun, update from city manager.
Uh, really quickly, uh, Mayor Fish, members of the council, tomorrow we are having an open house, uh, from five thirty to seven. It is a guided tour of city hall, um, including the council chambers and, um, parts of, not all, but parts of city hall. So come one, come all, um, I know several of you will be there tomorrow as well, uh, at which point too, uh, we'll just talk about some of the projects that we're doing, exciting stuff that the city is doing going forward, so hopefully see some of you there. Five thirty till the start of the concert at seven tomorrow. Uh, also too, uh, you will start to see our contractor, uh, paving coatings out on Rosemead Boulevard doing some preliminary work, uh, you know, site surveys and everything else. And, um, we are looking to complete this slurry seal project, which, well, uh, is not as extensive as a grind and overlay, which means, you know, several weeks of, of, of lanes obstructed. Uh, there'll be one lane in each direction for a period of time over a few days, uh, we'll make sure to get that on social media, but it's gonna be at least, there's gonna be disruption because it's, uh, two lanes in each direction on Rosemead Boulevard, but we will, uh, try to do the best we can. Uh, and, and we're trying to complete, complete that before, uh, school starts as well. And we'll have a more defined schedule to you, uh, in the next week.
Is that city limit to city limit?
Yes, sir, it is, it is city limit to city limit.
Brian, new banners would look really nice with the paved streets.
New ban, new banners as well, we will, we actually, we'll come back to the council with some proposed, uh, updates to that as well and get your, get your approval on what those, uh, proposed updates would be as well. That's it for me this evening, happy birthday, councilmember Sternquist.
Happy birthday to you, Brian also.
Update from city attorney?
Uh, no update tonight, you've been dealing with the law all night.
Okay, um, council reports regarding ad hocks are standing committee meetings. I would like to go ahead and disband the city commissioner recruitment ad hoc.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, on the, um, ad hoc standing committee, I'd like to report that councilmember Mann and I, as the facilities, public works and infrastructure standing committee meeting, we met July fifth uh, to go over the design concept for Primrose, uh, Primrose Park. And, um, very exciting, uh, we've given some, um, on behalf of the council, we, 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 uh, offer some opinion and, uh, emphasize thing, I mean, we have, we have two very exciting design and, but we added a few odd things that perhaps, uh, they could consider when they bring back for council's, uh, consideration. So, great stuff to, to look forward to. Do you have any?
Yeah, I'll, I just, I'll add that it's, I think a lot of our comments were related to how we liked aspects of both designs that were brought forward and is there a way to kind of bring those elements together amongst other things, so. So yeah, very exciting and then looking for, for council's input on, on what council's desire is to, for the park designs.
Yeah, i- if I could just summarize and just very quickly, uh, it's a little bit of, uh, eye candy in the sense that, uh, they, they did offer different, um, activity areas, not in a passive ways. Um, they did show different ways of, um, fencing, they show different ideas of potentially using landscaping and, um, and, and sidewalk areas, so we, we, we gave some opinion, uh, for consideration and, and so I guess, with that, they went out, back out and then have the public, uh, meeting again.
Yeah, we did, we actually did, if I can elaborate, so we did have the ad hoc and then we went to the community, the community gave some more suggestions as well. And there's actually quite a bit of consistency.
Isn't there another meeting tomorrow?
There's another, the Parks Commission gets to, Parks and Recreation Commission gets to see the design tomorrow as well. And then on July thirtieth, you will see the, the variations of some of those designs going forward. Again, we don't have to go into a level of detail related to the Prop sixty-eight grant, but we need to know, uh, in a pretty strong concept standpoint. But we don't need to like, for example, we don't need to pick exactly which trees we're gonna pick, but the, the, we don't have to go down to that granular level, but we do have to get your blessing on, this is what we're presenting to the state in terms of the grant and design and general, and general design. But yeah, we've gone through a few iterations, it doesn't capture what everybody's looking for at the end of the day, but it does its best to, um, capture a lot of what we've heard across the board in terms of feedback. And I'm, I, I think there's, I think there's a decent amount of consensus there.
Okay, any other reports? Okay, item fourteen, council item separate from city manager's regular report, councilmember Mann.
Well, thank you, Mayor Fish, uh, I'll be brief, I really enjoyed the, uh, fly kite night at Lavelle Park, um, whole family attended and we brought some friends with us and, uh, yeah, we, at, at one point, I think I counted at least thirty kites up in the air.
It's very nice.
Uh, Mayor Protem was absolutely right, there was good wind between exactly the hours that you specified, uh, and so.
All those years at the park, yes.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, look, look, thank you to our Parks and Rec Department for some of the great ideas. So I'm looking forward to that neon night walk, I believe is the next one.
Friday?
Friday.
This Friday.
Is it this Friday or next Friday?
This Friday, I believe.
Is it this Friday?
Oh, Campolos, you're right, next Friday.
Yeah, so the following Friday, yeah.
Campolos is Friday.
Yeah, and looking forward to the, uh, city hall open house.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
A few things, um, um, Mr. Cook, we had our commission interviews and the council had discussed that we thought possibly the Public Safety and Transportation Commission could meet once a month. And so if we could put that on a future agenda, that would be helpful for all of us. I was wondering, especially in light of the recent earthquake, and it's been some time, I think, Tom, you were involved with the, um, emergency setup with the clergy. I mean, that's been, how many years, five years?
It's been a while.
Five years, it's been a while, and I was wondering if we have anything, um, or any plans in place on revisiting those tabletop exercises or doing something with our community, um, for emergency preparedness? I think we can't be too overly cautious of, and, I mean, I think we should be overly cautious and do, um, something in the near future at least.
I, I think, and I, and I agree with that, I think the discussion that I would even carry that a little farther may be involve not only our churches, but our schools as well.
Our schools.
You could, another partner to figure out, it's, it's always better when you're addressing these issues, as we've learned from the past, that the more people you have, uh, working together, the better type of, uh, response you can give. And I think the big players in the city, of course, not only the city, but the school and then of course our churches and.
And I was thinking with the savings that we're now going to have with the schools picking up the, uh, fourteen thousand dollars in, um, crossing guards, that maybe we could put some of that money towards, and involving the school also, putting some money towards an emergency preparedness day or kind of like what we had before.
Just an education.
Something, yeah, would be really helpful. Um, on the mosquito front, there's been no confirmed cases of West Nile virus in LA County, which is fantastic. But as it heats up again, we know that, um, mosquitoes will start to get active. Um, the mosquito district, we met on Friday and one of the exciting things was out of the, their three, the district is three weeks ahead of dealing with pools that are, um, not being in use, but they're just breeding mosquitoes. And so they feel really good, uh, Temple City had one of the highest, um, numbers of compliance with pools that were contaminated. So I think we're doing really good here, so that was positive. And also just a reminder that one pool can, one contaminated pool can breed, what, three million mosquitoes in a month. So that just tells us that we need to tip and toss, be sure that we're not letting, um, stagnant water in our, um, pots outside and anything that, a container that can hold. in our, um, pots outside and anything that, a container that can hold water. Um, let's see, one other thing. Oh, something exciting for me, uh, even though I don't like to fly, but I'll be leaving on Friday for, um, Jacksonville, Florida, and I'll be giving my first presentation, uh, for Foothill Transit to CTA on decline in ridership in public transit. So, if it goes well, maybe I'll do it for the council. So, we'll see, but.
You'd be explaining why there's a drop in ridership?
In ridership, in public transit, so, um, I'm excited about that. A little bit nervous, but, um, we'll see how it goes. And, um, just wanna wish Brian a happy birthday and thank him for the chocolate mint chip cake that I ordered for him, but it's actually my favorite, so. But thank you. Thank you, Jerry, too, for the birthday wish. And that's it.
Council member Yu?
Well, the only thing I wanna add is happy birthday to
Thank you.
Councilmember Sternquist and our City Manager, uh, Cook. And, um, so, happy birthday.
Thank you.
There's at least four birthdays today of people I know.
Really?
Yeah.
Four, huh?
Yes, four, four people I know born on this day. So, happy birthday, of course, to both of you. Sorry you had to spend your birthday here, but I suppose it could be worse.
The food was good.
Although they've left, I just wanted to give a good shout out to, uh, Mr. Reimers and, of course, Director Forbes and the staff for all their hard work in, in putting together this, uh, this ordinance or the proposed amendment. Even though we weren't able to come to any kind of, uh, conclusion tonight, I think, uh, it was a very good, well-presented, um, presentation and, uh, you know, what I took away was a really, truly community effort. I mean, they reached out, they, they talked to different people, and so, you know, my compliments to everybody who was part of that, of course, place works. Mark Teague, is that his name? Is that who was, I think, this evening? I, I know they worked on it, so, good job. And, and, and even though they're not here, I, I, I want, I wanna let them know, maybe you can pass on, they, we will, we will get it passed at some point. It just takes us a while, but, uh, other than that, oh, I know, one other thing I wanted to mention is our, we all met our, uh, Australian ambassadors, um, earlier. They're leave, they leave for Australia on Thursday, right, Jerry? Thursday evening from, uh, here from the park. They'll be leaving around seven o'clock. If anybody wants to come and say goodbye to them, they'll, they're off to Australia, so, uh, we wish them a safe and, uh, and good travels and, uh, look forward to hearing their stories when they get back, so.
How long is that flight?
It's a, uh, fourteen to fifteen hour flight, depending on your winds. Uh, it's a seventeen hour difference, so you leave one day and you get there two days later.
Wow.
So, it's, uh, interesting.
And when you come back, you come back the same day.
But when you come back, you come back the same day, yes.
You come back the same day.
Yes.
It's very odd.
It's very interesting, but they'll have a great time, so, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have a couple of things. Um, I would like to say at our last Foothill Transit meeting, Councilmember Sternquist was appointed to the Executive Board, and she was also, um, voted in as Vice President. So, um, I'd like to congratulate her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well-deserved. Wanted to also say with the open house tomorrow that starts at five-thirty, it is also, it does include City Hall and the council chambers and the EOC. So, make sure you come over to these buildings. They will be open and we will have representatives here to answer any questions. I would like to, and I believe all, all of us do, thank all of our residents that applied for our commissions. We had our commissioner interviews last Friday. It's a very, very difficult job. We had many, many well-deserved applicants, but again, we, um, could only choose a few, but I would like to thank them. I think it's, I think it's wonderful that we had so many people apply and so many people interested in giving back to the community, so, again, I'd like to thank them, and I think the interviews did really well, and I think we got to meet some really great people that I, I'm pretty sure we're gonna see again, so, that was really good. And, of course, I would like to thank our planning commissioners and Scott and Michael for all their work with the zoning code. And I believe that's it. Do we have any additional comments, Jerry?
Good evening again, Jerry Janbazian. Two weeks ago, I was here before you, asking about an update on the, uh, sign entrance to the city. I was hoping to receive that tonight, and I haven't heard anything about it yet.
Okay.
My bad, Mayor Fish. Um, so, we actually did do a design. Um, the design came in a bit expensive. We're doing some value engineering with that design, and I'm planning to come back to you on the second meeting of August with that new value engineered design.
What does that mean? Cheaper?
Yes.
Okay.
It came in a bit ex- yes.
Value, what did you say? Value what?
Value engineered. Otherwise, otherwise known as cheaper.
Is that just gonna be single-sided since Arcadia backed out?
Uh, well, Arcadia hasn't backed out fully yet, so.
Totally? Oh.
No, they haven't backed out.
No, so, we'll, we'll, but we're, there's some, there were some, the, design challenges in the cost, so, we're value engineering, making it a bit cheaper, and we'll come back.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, and, um, close public comments, and we are adjourned.